All right, good evening, everyone. This work session of the Ossio School Board is being conducted in person. This work session can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website, and an archived recording will also be available on the district website. The purpose of the school board work session is to build trust and teamwork to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. The outcome of today's work sessions, our board members will receive information and updates on building a better future, career, and technical education pathways. There will be an enrollment update as well as COVID-19 preparedness plan. And the board calendar will also be reviewed. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that board members please state their names. I'll start with Ms. Madison.
I'm Director Heather Douglas. Thank you.
Director Thomas Brooks.
Director Missata Jones is out ill today.
Director Tanya Simons.
Director Tamara Grady.
And I am Kelsey Dawson-Walton, also present. I'll ask Superintendent McIntyre to facilitate this evening's work session.
All right, thank you, Chair Dawson-Walton. Good evening, board members. Just a quick look at the agenda, just to kind of get our timing for this evening. Our building a better future, career, and tech education pathways, we've tried to schedule between 6:15 and we're a little ahead, so we're doing good already. About 45 minutes is what our team had planned for that. And then, once we're through that, we'll move right into our enrollment update from John Morstead. Then we'll have our team share with you our COVID-19 preparedness plan update, then finally wrapping up the night with a board calendar review, which we hopefully can get to this time. We've probably been able to do that in the past, with the goal of being done before 8:30 this evening. So to transition into our first agenda item this evening, our team's been anxiously awaiting this, and as you're well aware, our CTE programming work group has been working diligently nearly each and every week for months on the proposed pathways as a part of our larger Building a Better Future initiative. The CTE work group's been responsive to your suggestions and wonderings and questions, as well as the changes that we've received from workforce trend data. And the attached final portfolio of documents and senior materials, which you've seen here over the past few months, reflects those updated recommendations on those pieces. So in your board packet, you'll find the final versions of many of those documents that have reflected the work of the team. I do want to just mention that a tremendous amount of work's gone into these recommendations in this final version of the work in alignment with a number of things. Student and family interests, our CTE staff in our buildings, working with the Department of Education, and also Real-Time Talent and the Department of Economic and, oh, I'm going to, DEED. Let's go with DEED. And the group's now seeking the support of the board so that they can proceed with the very important next step. And that next step is the facilities audit and analysis in preparation for a potential bond referendum if we need to or not in the future. And some of you have had the desire to explore some different facility options, in either adding one or more separate facilities potentially, in addition to the possibilities in our high school sites to implement these pathway strands. So, once we can get the strands established, the next step in our process is for John Morstead and our district facilities team to work with World Architects to determine what are those options, figure out what can work, and what the cost may be, and come back with those different proposals for board direction. So we've been waiting to get to that full facilities audit, which will support the strands, and we believe if we move forward after tonight, we can get that audit hopefully completed by the end of February. So we're anxious to get that started. And those audit results will go to that oversight committee as part of our Building a Better Future process for consideration to develop the final recommendations and summary report that will come forward to the board. So I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Kelly Parpart, our Director of Learning and Achievement, Jeremy Willey, who's not able to be with us tonight, our high school principals and other, many other district leaders that are with us not only tonight, but have done a lot of work in supporting this effort, including members of our learning and achievement team and our Department of Educational Equity team, and I'm really thankful for their assistance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly and the members of our work group, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. So just give them a second to get up to the front, please. Good evening, Chair Dawson-Walton, board members, Superintendent McIntyre, and guests. We are excited to be here tonight to present our Career and Technical Education Programming Work Group's proposed CTE recommendations. Thank you for giving us this time. I would first like to introduce our industry experts, who are guests of ours tonight, Erin Olson from Real-Time Talent and Tim O'Neil from the Department of Employment and Economic Development. And I'd also like to introduce our invaluable group members who will be presenting tonight. So we will begin with Godfrey Etta-Ferrari. He's our Career and Technical Education Coordinator. Bart Becker, Principal at Maple Grove Senior High. Sarah Vernig, Principal at Ossio Senior High. Heather Miller-Sink, Principal at Park Center Senior High. And Kristin Haughey, Principal at the Ossio Area Learning Center. I also want to thank group members Jeremy Willey, Jill Kind, who's sitting here with me tonight, and Kim Reese Graff for their contributions. Before we start, please remember that a comprehensive report of our group's work, along with all documents that our group has created, can be accessed through the CTE board report that has previously been shared with each of you. Our group has been diligently working to be responsive to the feedback the board provided both last May and over the past few months, while simultaneously vetting every recommendation with a two-pronged approach, student interest and industry data. We have also been conscientious about connecting our work to our vision statement, which is to unleash and enhance the brilliance of our scholars to thrive and change the world. Likewise, we connected our work to the following strategic directions: creating safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environments that foster global curiosity, belonging, innovation, and engagement; and building and nurturing a culture of achievement by providing content-rich, rigorous, equitable, and individualized pathways. Our goals for tonight are that you will understand the context for the Career and Technical Education Programming Work Group recommendations, and that you will feel comfortable supporting the proposed CTE specialty strands at each high school. During tonight's presentation, we will review our updated CTE proposal and also discuss the additional steps that we have taken in response to both the board's feedback and also to the updated employment data that we received from the Department of Employment and Economic Development, known as DEED, and from Real-Time Talent. An essential document to our work is the Minnesota Career Will, which comes from the Minnesota Department of Education and around which all CTE programming must be aligned. We placed a hard copy of the Career Will at each of your seats so that you are able to easily refer back to the will throughout tonight's presentation. With that, please allow me a minute to orient you to the will. The Career Will includes six distinct career fields. These are the six areas you can see on the visual that form the circle of the will. Each career field is color-coded. So beginning with the gold color then, and working our way clockwise around the circle, there is business management and administration, agriculture, food, and natural resources, arts, communications, and information systems, engineering, manufacturing, and technology, and then directly at the bottom, health, science, technology, and working back around, the blue, human services. You will see in the upcoming slides how our proposed specialty strands are also color-coded in alignment with the colors of the career fields within this visual. Extending out from each of the six career fields is the broader colored area that contains the career clusters. The career clusters are denoted by the bold headings. For example, looking at the large yellow area, you will see that there are career clusters for marketing, finance, business management and administration, and hospitality and tourism. Under each career cluster are the career pathways, which are denoted by the hash marks. So again, there are six career fields, then there's a number of career clusters within each of those career fields, and then there's a number of career pathways under each career cluster. Further, as you look at the will, you will see where each of our nine proposed specialty strands are located within the MDE will. Take the yellow quadrant, for example, and you will see Park Center Senior High and Maple Grove Senior High both have finance and marketing proposed strands. And Ossio Senior High has a business management and administration proposed strand. So in short, each of our three high schools has a proposed strand that falls within the business, management, and administration career field. Moving diagonally down from there, you will also see that all three of our high schools has a proposed strand in the engineering, manufacturing, and technology career field, with Maple Grove Senior High having two proposed strands in that field. It is then rounded out with Ossio Senior High having a proposed strand in the maroon-colored health, science, technology career field, and Park Center Senior High having a proposed strand in the blue-colored human services career field. It's also important to note that even though you don't see a particular strand reflected in each career field, so for example, the green or the purple fields, CTE courses are still being offered within those career fields at each high school. All students have access to the full complement of foundational CTE courses at their own respective schools. The strands will simply go deeper for those interested in a specific CTE strand of study. We are also proposing specialty CTE programming that all high school students can access. This means that transportation will be provided for students to attend the program of their choice, regardless of the high school in which they are enrolled. So let's take a closer look at our proposed strands. Oh, we got, we have to go back. There we go. That's the right one. On this slide, the first thing you may notice is the color coding of the strands. This ties directly back to the MDE Career Will, which we just discussed. For example, you'll notice again that each high school has a gold specialty strand, indicating that each high school is offering a strand within the business, management, and administration career field. Likewise, you will also see that each high school has an orange strand, indicating that each high school also has an engineering, manufacturing, and technology career field strand. I will now turn it over to Godfrey Etta-Ferrari, our Career and Technical Education Coordinator.
On this slide, you can see the advisory boards we currently have in place for each of the four career fields of business management and administration, engineering, manufacturing, and technology, health, science, technology, and human services. Again, these are color-coded to align with the MDE Career Will. I will give you a few seconds to look over some of the advisory boards we have in place.
So this slide depicts the three proposed strands at Maple Grove Senior High School. Working your way horizontally across the top row, you will see our proposed strand names of business, finance, and marketing, engineering, technology, and design preconstruction. Now, if you work your way down from each proposed strand, you will see which career field, career cluster, and pathway the strands fall under on the MDE Career Wheel. The business, finance, and marketing strand includes occupations that manage and implement policy and strategy for an organization's capital structure, budgeting, acquisition and investment, financial modeling and planning, funding, dividends, and taxation, and occupations related to getting products in the hands of customers, including forecasting, planning, buying, displaying, selling, and providing customer service. The engineering technology strand includes workers who apply mathematics, science, and technology concepts to solve problems quantitatively in engineering projects involving design, development, or production in various technologies. And the design and preconstruction strand includes occupations related to the management and planning for building and construction project processes and resources.
Moving on to Ossio Senior High and working your way horizontally across the top row, you will see our proposed strand names of business management, automotive services, and health careers. If you work your way down from each proposed strand, you will see which career field, career cluster, and pathway the strand falls under on the MDE Career Wheel. The business management strand includes occupations that plan, organize, direct, and evaluate all or part of a business organization through the allocation and use of financial, human, and material services. The automotive services strand is for those who are passionate about the craftsmanship of cars and are curious about the engineering that goes into vehicles, and who are skilled problem solvers. Occupations include automotive engineers, quality testing engineers, automobile designers, automotive mechanics, automotive body repairmen, supervisory technicians, automotive technicians, and automotive electricians. The health career strand includes occupations that interact with patients or the public to provide an environment for the delivery of health care. It also includes occupations focused on changing the health status of patients over time through direct care, treatment, counseling, or health education information. This slide depicts the three proposed strands at Park Center Senior High School. Working your way horizontally across the top row, you will see our proposed strand names of finance and marketing, construction management, and education. If you work your way down from each proposed strand, you will see which career field, career cluster, and pathway the strand falls under on the MDE Career Wheel. The finance and marketing strand includes workers who support the flow of funds from investors to companies and institutions, including financial planning and asset management. The marketing management and the marketing communications components include occupations related to advertising, promotions, and sales, and staff who plan, coordinate, and implement marketing strategies and research in businesses and corporations or nonprofit institutions. The construction management strand includes workers who manage and/or build and remodel homes, or community, recreational, industrial, and office facilities, and includes designers and builders of highways, streets, bridges, tunnels, and airports. The education strand includes occupations that lead or assist in the delivery of instructional materials or lessons in classrooms, workshops, or via online and distance technology, and includes individual and group instruction of children, adults, or professionals.
Ossio Area Learning Center's existing early middle college program, also called tomorrow's college readiness, has established partnerships with Hennepin Technical College and North Hennepin Community College. This programming allows scholars who are enrolled at OLC the opportunity to earn college credit while completing their high school diploma. In addition, the pathways they choose within the program can lead to certification and/or degrees. These partnerships are approved by MDE.
Now that we've discussed the specific strands for each school, it is important to again ground ourselves in the background of our work. What brought us here? In 2017 to 2018, EPC Mark determined that a framework was needed to inform our future learning spaces we had created to meet the district's educational goals. To inform the district when time and money was going to be invested into constructing and redesigning spaces, and to develop recommendations for next-generation learning spaces. In March 2019 to December 2019, a secondary next-generation learning spaces study team and a secondary next-generation learning spaces leadership team was convened. You can see this on the graphic in the yellow circle. Through the work of the study team and the leadership team, in June of 2020, the team recommended and the board approved complete renovation and additions necessary for specialized career and technical education programming in each of the three comprehensive high schools. You can see this circle in red on your document. With that, in December of 2020, Superintendent McIntyre asked that Assistant Superintendent Kelly Parpart design and lead what is now known as the Career Tech Ed Programming Work The following four slides are sampling of exemplars of our work that we choose to share with you today in order to illustrate the multiple and varied steps and processes we undertook in order to synthesize our final recommendation, and in order to be responsive to the board's feedback.
So when we began our work way back in January of 2021, we knew there were going to be a number of issues we would need to identify and address before we could get to the work of recommending any of the proposed strands. And with that, we completed a series of jam board activities with our team and specific ESP staff that identified challenges, implications, and solutions for a number of issues. The issues we identified that needed resolution included transportation, as you can see on the screen, course offerings, human resources issues, staffing issues, partnerships, FTE issues, allocations, facilities, and scheduling. The same jam board activity was completed for each of the issues I just listed. And as you can see on the screen with the transportation example, we identified the issue, generated challenges for that issue, implications of the issue, and then solutions to the challenges. We further invited in-house experts to problem-solve specific issues with our group. For example, when we worked on transportation, we invited Nick Martini and Troy Schreifels to work through it with us. When we discussed HR issues, we invited Laurel Anderson. And when we discussed facilities, we invited Dale Carlstrom and Lene Sean from World Architects. The second exemplar we chose to include is the CTE decision-making framework. Now, the completion of this framework allowed for the developing of a shared understanding around our realities, our options, choice-making processes, any necessary refinements needed, and ultimately, implementation. You can read through the details of this document and the documents presented in the next few slides in the CTE Programming Work Group Board Report.
The third exemplar we chose to include is the Equity Magnifier. In order to ensure that our work is aligned with our racial equity beliefs, we completed the seven steps of the MDE Equity Magnifier. We also invited Dwayne Wardley, DOE Director, and Michael Lee Han, former Assistant Superintendent who oversaw DOE, to assist with vetting our work through the Equity Magnifier. Again, this document is also contained in the CTE board report for your further review. The fourth and final exemplar we chose to include is the CTE Programming Work Group Guiding Change Document. In order to align our work with the strategic planning process currently underway in Ossio Area Schools, we completed the teamwork's guiding change document. The focus question was, how do we provide CTE programming at each high school site that is accessible to all scholars, unique to each site, evidence-based, and provide scholars with viable post-high school career options? Identifying first the context and current reality of the first column on the graphic, and then the unacceptable means, second column on the graphic, led us to clearly defined results that we are recommending be in place. Those results include, number one, using data from our required comprehensive needs assessment conducted by Real-Time Talent, input from CTE teachers, input from students, and feedback from various stakeholders to create three unique strands at each of the high schools from which students can select. Number two, ensure that students have equitable access to specialty strands at each high school. Number three, offer a menu of options for each student to be able to access across the district, different disparate strands that all students could access regardless of dwelling place, race, socioeconomic status, and any of the other indicators. One important point to note is, please note that the last two results are not shown on the screen due to space constraints, but include, number four, developing and implementing CTE strands through an equity lens and use of the Equity Magnifier, and, number five, ensuring alignment of select specialty CTE strands with industry forecast data and student registration numbers. Again, you can see this document in its entirety in the CTE report.
Two industry experts provided us with current employment and job trend data that was reviewed by the team several times since last January. DEED updates employment trend data quarterly for the state of Minnesota, and Real-Time Talent updates the comprehensive local needs assessment annually with focuses, which focuses on Ossio Area Schools specifically. DEED and Real-Time Talent partner with K-12 education, post-secondary education, industry associations, community-based training organizations, and the public sector to ensure students and job seekers have the skills and experience needed to grow in high-demand opportunities. And we're now turning it over to Team O'Neil from DEED.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tim O'Neil, and I'm the Twin Cities Regional Labor Market Analyst with the Department of Employment and Economic Development, or DEED. I work with DEED's Labor Market Information Office, which collects and disseminates a wealth of labor market information, including labor force statistics, occupational employment and wage statistics, graduate employment outcomes, industry trends, and employment projections. This slide here that you see on your screen highlights select employment projections statewide in a number of occupational groups that fall within or are highly associated with the proposed strands for Ossio Senior High School, Maple Grove Senior High School, and Park Center Senior High School. As can be seen, these occupational groups are projected to witness significant growth through 2028, resulting in high demand for workers across the state. I should point out that our office projected an overall growth rate of 4.7% through 2028, so all of these occupational groups are close to or well above overall projected employment growth in the state. I should also note that this slide highlights net new employment growth. Our office also projects significant demand for workers due to labor market exit openings, or openings due to current workers leaving the labor market, primarily through retirements. And this has probably only accelerated in recent years. For business and financial operations occupations, for example, that you see on the screen, there are projected to be nearly 50,000 labor market exit openings through 2028, on top of the 12,060 estimated projected net new openings. If we go to the next slide, DEED's employment projections can be broken down as well for industry sectors. Here showing percentage growth for those major sectors through 2028. Strong growth projected for construction, professional business services, and financial activities that you can see here that are highly related, associated with those strands for the major high schools here. And if we finally go to the next slide, here's a look at projected net new growth by industry sector through 2028, showing growth in industries like healthcare and socialists. showing growth in industries like healthcare and social assistance, professional scientific and technical services, educational services, finance and insurance, transportation and warehousing, management of companies, and construction. Lastly, I would like to say that DEED's labor market information, such as through our quarterly census of employment and wages, reveals high employment concentrations, which can be revealed through a measurement called location quotients for the proposed strands here in Hennepin County and the Seven County metro area. Our next speaker will reveal this as well with their analysis. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Olson, and I'm the Director of Strategic Research with Real-Time Talent. In two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, we engaged with the Hennepin West Perkins Consortium to provide analysis of the local labor market needs in your specific region and assess how well local CTE programming aligns to those local labor market needs. To do this, we focused in on the zip codes that most closely aligned to the consortium region, and then drilled down specifically to each and every school district's boundaries by zip code. So the information on the screen that you're seeing now and in the following slides are modeled from the source data that DEED also uses to the zip codes comprising the Osseo District two-seventy-nine. So this first slide is showing the local employment by industry in the zip codes that comprise the Osseo School District. Overall, there were nearly two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand people employed in the communities making up the Osseo School District in the third quarter of two thousand and nineteen, which was an increase of one-point-eight percent from two thousand and eighteen. However, more recent estimates from the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-one put employment at just under two-hundred-and-five-thousand people working in local zip codes. And this is about a quarter of total employment in all of Hennepin County. Locally, the Osseo District's largest industry by employment is manufacturing, as you can see here, employing just over thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred workers in your community. The next largest sectors in the region are healthcare and social assistance and retail trade. Wages increased across every industry in your community over the past year. Industries in the Osseo District with the highest average wages per worker based on two thousand and twenty numbers are utilities at almost a hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars per year, average wages. Management of companies and enterprises, finance and insurance. Industries with the best job growth locally over the last two years are management of companies and enterprises and finance and insurance and construction. And so as you can tell, just by what I've highlighted, these tie very nicely to the CTE strands that have been proposed across all of the high schools in your community. On the next slide, you'll see a series of clusters. Industry clusters are geographic concentration of interrelated industries or occupations. These clusters shown further to the right on this chart have higher forecasted average annual growth, while those further to the left are forecast as likely to decline. Clusters higher on the chart have higher average annual wages as of two thousand and twenty-one Q-two estimates, and clusters shown as larger circles have higher location quotients or local concentrations compared to what would be expected based on the concentration of those industry clusters seen on a national scale. Tim alluded to these earlier. So echoing what was just described on the prior slide, the industry cluster in the Osseo District with the highest relative concentration locally is electric and electronics manufacturing, shown in yellow there in the center of your screen. And just on top of that is machinery manufacturing in purple. And those have almost location quotients of three-point-five, so highly concentrated in your community. So, and these clusters employ approximately thirteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty workers or so, so on the smaller side, when we look at the numbers, count in kind of the whole scheme of employment in your region. But hyper-concentrated here, very unique to your region, something that is particular to the Osseo School District community. When we kind of highlight some of the other clusters that really jump out on this page, you'll notice healthcare, high, high growth, way off on the right-hand side. We see that across the Seven County metro and across our state. Pharmaceutical manufacturing, professional services, and other manufacturing clusters also are high on the chart and further on the growth side. The data on the next slide was presented initially by Real-Time Talent as part of the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment that we delivered on behalf of the Southwest Metro and Hennepin West Perkins Consortium, of which Osseo Area Schools is a member. This chart summarizes the alignment of secondary CTE programs to local high-skill, high-wage, high-demand careers in the Osseo community. It simplifies data on local occupations as well as student concentration rates, enrollment, and alignment to post-secondary offerings to evaluate simply whether programs have potential for expansion, which is indicated by a green dot saying "grow", are strong and suitable at the size they currently are, which is indicated by a yellow dot, or might need some reevaluation or adjustment, indicated with a red dot. It is to better match with the local high-skill, high-wage, high-demand careers or with local post-secondary institutions. This, of course, is not a recommendation to immediately start or stop any program, but does offer an initial framework for considering where additional attention could be focused for greater alignment with post-secondary and labor market opportunities. Health, science, and information technology, which you see at the top of the table, have some of the highest volumes of local high-skill, high-wage, high-demand careers with high alignment to local post-secondary offerings. There's a high volume of health science concentrators in that first column, reflecting sustained student interest to pursue not just a single course in the cluster, but multiple ones. In contrast, IT has a lower secondary concentration, meaning that at the time of reporting back in March two thousand and twenty, there were fewer than thirty-five secondary students concentrating in IT pathways. Real-Time Talent identified a need for growing, for growth in both health science and IT based on severity of local labor market demand, the promise that these careers offers in local forecasting employment growth and overall volume, and the alignment to post-secondary offerings. Architecture and construction, transportation, distribution, and logistics, these two clusters also face similar opportunity to grow programming. Education and training, and many of the business, management, and administration career clusters had strong program and student enrollment at the time of the two thousand and twenty assessment. And this label maintains suggests that programs have a strong match between student volumes and the local labor market demand and are recommended to stay in place. Hospitality and tourism and human services cluster offerings at the secondary level have high rates of student concentration and high local labor market demand due to turnover and volume of positions. However, those local offerings are also lower wage, lower skill, and lower growth than the other career cluster opportunities offered in the immediate Osseo area. And for these reasons, and due to high secondary student volume in relation to that local high-skill, high-wage demand careers in those clusters, these programs should be reeval, or to be evaluated to ensure they prepare students for those most high opportunity local positions, and students are finding career and education success after graduation.
In May two thousand and twenty-one, Morris Leatherman surveyed families around a variety of topics, one of which was their support of CTE programming in our schools. As you can see on the circle graph on the left of this slide, the parents of our inbound, transfer, and assigned students were very supportive of our CTE programming, with eighty-one percent of families responding positively by selecting either excellent or good. On the second chart in the upper-right portion of the slide, you'll see that as time as a resident in Osseo area schools increases, so does the rate of positive feelings about our CTE programming. Finally, in the chart with the two data points on the bottom-right portion of the slide, families identifying as Hispanic or Latino had the highest level of positive ratings of the CTE programming at ninety-two percent. You can see that ratings were eighty percent or higher across all race and ethnicity groups. In addition, Somali and Spanish-speaking family groups had the greatest proportions rating the CTE programs positively at ninety-four and eighty-eight percent respectively.
High school students have nineteen slots during their four years of high school for electives. The students have over four hundred electives to choose from to fill these nineteen slots. Student tallies are very powerful indicators of student interest. We developed a CTE student survey to gather feedback about student interest in our nine proposed CTE strands. You can see the nine strands on the survey before you. This survey was distributed to a representative sample of ninth and tenth-grade students from all three high schools and the OALC in their advisory courses. There were five-hundred-and-sixty students within the sample, and four-hundred-and-eight students responded, for a response rate of seventy-three percent. Students could respond with one of the following three options: Interested would register, Interested might register, or not interested. They were also provided with an option to name a CTE strand they would be interested in participating in that was not listed above. In that regard, there were forty-one students who made suggestions within your CTE within your CTE Board Report. You can see what those suggestions were, but please note, we only listed those suggestions made by two or more students. If you look at the second graph, you will see the six of the nine proposed CTE strands garnered interest from fifty percent or more of students surveyed. These programs included business, finance, and marketing, sixty-nine percent; business management, sixty-two percent; finance and marketing, sixty-one percent; engineering technology, fifty-three percent; health careers, fifty-one percent; and design pre-construction, fifty-one percent. Finally, if you look at the third graphic, you will see that there were several differences between students identified as male and female in synergy. In the chart, you can see which CTE strands had fifty percent or more students of that gender interested in the proposed strand, denoted by blue. This data shows that some of the programs that had lower percentages of students' interest interest overall, automotive services, forty-three percent, and education at thirty-six percent, have much higher percentages of students interested in them when we disaggregated by gender.
You have seen evidence of the support from students, families, MDE, and our industry experts in this presentation. In addition, principals and I met quickly with CTE staff to gather their input and feedback and report back to the work group. CTE staff fully supported three specialty strands proposed for each of the three high schools. As you can see from this slide and this visual, we have support from students and families, from CTE staff, from MDE, and from industry expert DEED and Real-Time Talent.
Thank you very much for your time and attention. Are there any questions that the group can answer for you that would be helpful in supporting the proposed strands?
Okay, yeah, thank you so much for your presentation today. There's a lot of great information. And I remember the last time we met, we had a lot of different questions and directions. And you've taken the time and you meet with each of us as well to really talk through this. And I've just seen so much in here that just reflective of, you know, even more so our students, and then, of course, industry experts. And so that, I just love seeing this. I think it's super exciting because, you know, CTE, I mean, it's just really hands-on, you know, offer dual enrollment, really career exploration, and really meaningful work. So I really appreciate this. And I know, Corey, what you said earlier, you know, we're really looking for a direction from the board now, are these kind of the right strands? And then really, you know, moving that forward, and then talking about, you know, once we kind of give that direction, then it's like, you know, then where? How does this happen? I mean, we talked a lot about, you know, I heard you talk about transportation. I heard you talk about, like, it's open, you know, we want to kind of open it to all students. Just because it's at Park Center doesn't mean somebody at Maple Grove can't attend. And I'm sure a lot of us who have our own students are like, how does that work yet? Which we probably aren't there yet, but, um, so, yeah, so I think the question is, at first kind of round that we go is just, is this, are these strands representative and in the right direction for the board? So I will start with anyone. It's a work session, so.
Sure, I can start. I just want to see, I really appreciate the work done in conjunction with DEED and the labor market analysts to match the interest of our scholars with the employment opportunities in the near future. This is a very thorough report. I really love the equity-based lens that you used, and I hope that you continue to use that lens as we move through this process, making sure that these opportunities are equitable and let know, let each and every student know that they can achieve anything that they set their dreams to. So, thank you.
Yeah, I concur that it's really helpful to hear from the industry experts to validate that what we're doing is in the right spaces considering the future opportunities for our students as they grow. So, and we have seen a lot of this information to this point in time, so I want to be thoughtful about asking new questions because I know the preparation that has gone in. But with the growth in the healthcare field, can you maybe add some insights to thinking about the future? If there is, kind of, how we're thinking about potentially adding more there? Are we thinking about that for the future? Are there any limitations to that? To growing that particular strand?
I guess I guess speak to do what I see and what I've noticed with our health career strand. When we think about projected growth, we have students that come not only from the other two respective high schools, but we have students that come from Northwest Suburban Integration District, and that they choose to come to us for the specific program. And because of the number of classrooms and the size and the equipments and so forth that we have, typically speaking, we've had to turn away some students, even though they're interested. So, and it's just due to capacity. We just don't have that physical space to do it. We try and find creative ways to do it, and it continues to exponentially grow. If you look at some of the data of the numbers from where it started several years ago up until now, we continue to have more and more interest specifically in our health careers and also our automotive programs that we just don't have the physical facility capacity for.
So I think that speaks to kind of the earlier introduction that we might be exploring new thinking on that for the future and ensuring that the space will accommodate where we need to go. So I think there's a lot of excitement and interest in that particular line of future planning.
One particular area that's gotten a lot of conversation that I've been a part of, and I want to thank Sarah and the staff at Osseo for having this program ready. The Certified Nursing Assistant Training program and the demands for that statewide are huge. That will be a discussion topic here at the legislature. There was a joint letter from the Office of Higher Ed that went to the legislature, like, trying to create a grant program to expand that particular program, just right there in that one area alone of our Health Services Department. So we were on that call saying, hey, we got experience with this. We know how to, we know how to do this. So as that, if and when that gets more traction, we're well positioned for it.
Then I just had a couple of questions. So again, bringing industry experts in. We've got the I-94 West Chamber. We've got our cities that are kind of have their own economic committees. We don't, they don't have their own chambers. But is this something that we typically share or engage with those groups in? And I know our students will, our scholars will go everywhere across the state and have access jobs everywhere, but I'm just curious about if there's any communication or partnership with those particular groups here.
Yes, yes, I'm sure. Actually, we do. We started with Twin West. And we have, we started with the chambers that we have in here closed down. And then we moved to Twin West. Twin West's closed down. Now we have Minneapolis Chambers of Commerce. So as a matter of fact, we, our advisory board is really controlled by Minneapolis Chambers of Commerce. So really, we do, yeah.
If you have anything you'd like to add, Erin, please go ahead.
Yes.
Don't be shy.
I'm happy to also speak to that as well. Real-Time Talent is under the fiscal sponsorship of the Minneapolis Regional Chamber Development Foundation. And so we've been able to really integrate the team from Twin West and with, within the Minneapolis Regional Chamber. There is now a, an annual talent symposium that came with the Twin West Chamber into the Minneapolis Regional Chamber. I believe it's now I believe it's now the second year under the Minneapolis Chamber. It will be held at the beginning of February. That's really used as an opportunity for stakeholders, a lot of industry experts to come to the table virtually this year to really contribute and provide feedback on this very data. I'll be presenting there on the regional data that was just put together about a month and a half ago. It's done a little differently than what you saw on your screen, took a little bit of a different path. But there are individual one-page insights into different pathways. And there will be facilitated discussions in that upcoming event. So there will be additional spaces for the whole Hennepin West region to provide continuing, ongoing feedback as well, which I'm sure will be incorporated into planning purposes. To the point about healthcare and growth, it's heartening to hear that there's such high student interest because healthcare is the number one career field of shortage in our state. It's high demand, high shortage here locally as well. The top occupations forecasting local shortages, if we continue with our status quo right now here in this particular portion, the Hennepin West region, are registered nurses, nurse practitioners, licensed practical nurses, medical assistants, and physical therapists. And so we've actually taken a look at, you know, what are the origin occupations, the gateway occupations, and then those target, the high-wage roles? And how do you really ladder those experiences? So we've been doing that work and happy to be, be your partners in that.
Thank you.
So similarly to the question the director, Simon's just asked, looking at this advisory board slide, wondering if, one, you could talk a little more about the role of that advisory board, short and long term? And then, two, if we've already identified local partners that would be interested in going on this journey with us long term? So things like summer job, part-time jobs, internships, hands-on training, those types of things.
Sure, the answer is yes. We're working with GSP Ed. And they are a partner in that, in that direction. So we're working, we're just only, I had a meeting with Mandy Jessen from GSP Ed and working with Genesis Works. We have long-term internship with them. So the answer is yes. All our partners here that were listed advisory, they have very strong hope in getting us to that long and sustaining partnership.
Hi, and this is still early on, we haven't even approved the CTE programs yet. But I know that we have so many organizations in our own cities that could and should be partnering with us on this. I hope that that is something that we're going to continue to pursue in terms of expanding what those partnership opportunities are for our scholars. But I will move on from that. I really want to say thank you to the entire group for all of the work that went into this. One, I know there was a lot of work that went into this from the very beginning. And it's not always easy to get feedback from the board that is unfavorable after a ton of work has gone into something. But this is a significant improvement over what we saw the first time. When I look at some of these career strands or specialty strands, there appears to be vast differences between the required education. So the investment in time and money that would go into a successful and long-term career in some of these. And I'm wondering how that was sort of, how that was considered as you determine which strands go into the different schools. So I look at things like business, engineering technology, this architecture and construction at Maple Grove, and then some of the career fields like automotive services or construction that may require less education than some of these others that may require a master's. I think what I'm getting at is if there are career fields that require less, and I'm not seeing those at Maple Grove, but I'm seeing them at the other two schools, does that feed into the perception that we have lower standards for some of our kids than others? Can someone speak to the education required for some of these?
No, absolutely does not mean there are lower expectations. These nine strands are available to every single high school student in District 279, at the three comprehensive high schools and at the Ossio Area Learning Center. We are taking advantage of the facilities and the resources existing in each of the three buildings, combined with the trend data of student interest through the tallies. And I remind you, there are nineteen options for students to select their electives, their choice electives. Having worked in two of the high schools, as has Principal Vernick and Principal Miller-Sink has worked at all three high schools, we are acutely aware of the trend data and the interests of our students matched with the job forecasts of our outside experts. There is absolutely no lower expectations of any of our students with respect to these nine, these nine pathways. This provides opportunity. And with partnership between the three high schools and the support from our system, and with the commitment to build relationships with outside agencies to grow and develop these pathways, which may lead to internships, concurrent credits, on-the-job training. This is a gigantic step forward for each of our respective high schools in District 279.
And I think I could add to a theme you heard throughout, really focus on high wage, or high skill, high demand, and high wage. Those are really some drivers that our industry leaders that are here with us and I really help the team kind of stay focused on within the, I like the word ladder that was used earlier because there's some laddering that can happen within these clusters and career fields. So again, high skill, high demand, high wages match, matches to our program offerings, as Dr. Brecker was mentioning. Go ahead.
I would also just like to add that I think there's a misnomer that because it says automotive services, that that isn't a high-skill nor a high-wage profession, same with construction. I would also offer that there are other fields, such in businesses, in finance, and education, that do require a four-year degree, and they make less than some of the people coming out of some of the programs that I've seen personally at Ossio Senior High with less training and professional courses. And not only that, but that when you look at the programming, it's much more specified to the interests and the needs of our kids, which is keeping them engaged not only in our, in our communities and in their job force, but also in our schools, which is vital. Because if they don't have something that they feel connected to, they won't stay in school. So I just want to put out there that just because it looks or might sound like that, that has not been the experience. And this is what our kids have asked for, and many of them have moved on up the ladder as Mr. McIntyre had offered as well too. So I just want to be careful that we're not assuming that they're not going to be high-scale, high-wage in those areas.
I would, uh, go ahead.
I was just going to say something quick with the, with the outcomes when you're looking at industry outcomes and occupational outcomes. Deed actually has a tool called Graduate Employment Outcomes. I guess it's a little plug, but it has excellent information where, it's actually very eye-opening and very surprising when you're looking at specific SIPs, Certified Instructional Programs, ones that are related to health careers, related to automotive careers, related to education, and then seeing the outcomes that they have throughout the state of Minnesota. So we're looking at kind of a, a relationship between students that have graduated from different areas, whether it's a certification, an associate degree, a bachelor's degree, or an advanced degree. And then we kind of longitudinally grab them in the labor market through social security numbers and employment and wage information. It's all confidential and, you know, it's confidential information, but it's aggregated. And within this graduate employment outcomes tool, again, it is very eye-opening to see the excellent outcomes for wages and then working in the industries that you'd expect workers, for instance, if they went into health careers. As Erin was alluding to earlier, it's by far the largest employing industry sector in the state of Minnesota, almost five hundred thousand jobs. It has by far, it's about one in five of current vacancies, over two hundred thousand vacancies in the state of Minnesota. Over one in five are in healthcare. And so when you're looking at all these different pathways, and this is just one example. You could do this for automotive, you could do this for business, you could do this for construction. And you can see the pathways are just incredible. And you can see that the outcomes when you're looking at this graduate employment outcomes data through the Department of Employment and Economic Development supports these strands. Thank you.
Thank you. So I certainly agree with all of you. I, that was an important question to ask. One, to make sure that equity was a huge consideration going through this process. And two, that was a huge part of the discussion at the last meeting that wasn't, I think, clearly articulated throughout the presentation. I, but I've mentioned in our individual sessions and at the beginning that I am supportive of these career strands and the work that you put into this. The one last question that I have is looking at a lot of the career fields or industries that were highlighted for growth. A lot of those appear to be sort of dominant or our career fields in our area that have been around a while. I'm wondering if we also considered or potentially missed any sort of emerging industries or anything that might be new to the area in the future.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to this too. I am glad that Tim made his plug for the graduate employment outcomes because that's a really important place to look, especially when we start getting into the realm of emerging fields as well. Career, CTE is great, having the pathways and opportunities to explore in a particular area is really important. We also know that not, not every career path is a straight line. In fact, most of us take a lot of different turns along our, our career path. And a big part of CTE is providing students with those skills so that they can go into high-skill, high-wage, high-demand careers that build on their skill sets in whatever direction that is. And so ensuring that those programs are helping kind of keep all doors open and opportunities for those growing fields is important. To name a couple, just to put a name on them, information technology is, it's a tricky one to have its own career cluster area because it touches everything. And so it's really important to be integrating that IT component across all disciplines, across multiple career pathways. And so I think that there's an opportunity to have that really embedded. And those skill sets are really new foundational skills. There's a lot of research showing that that's, those, there are core skill sets in that tech space that will serve in multiple areas. A lot of the occupations that tend to get classified under the STEM, S-T-E-M, kind of career cluster on that wheel, again, also are sort of emerging occupations, growing occupations that tie to multiple strands that you see on the screen behind you. So the opportunity really is to, kind of hearkening back to what I mentioned around origin occupations, gateway occupations, and target occupations. At the secondary level, it's really looking at what are those, what are the programs and opportunities and experiences that we can provide to students to enter into some of these origin occupations? Gain that first experience in a field, might not be the highest wage initially. Those entry-level wages might look very different than some expectations at first, but they're building that foundation for what's next. And with additional skills, certifications, training, education, being able to advance to some of those, those other career paths is an opportunity. So just to give some other examples of, for example, like in some of the engineering technology space, CNC tool programmers, electrical and electronics repairers, wind turbine service technicians, even purchasing agents that kind of crosses over. All of those are experiencing occupation gaps in this particular region and are likely to see shortages in the future. So that's just kind of one example to show some of the really high-wage, high-demands careers that do fall in just one example here. And I could, I could have pulled it from any, any of the ones on the screen.
Thank you. I, yeah, again, thank you. I don't know when we'll get to see this next, but I know I am also still struggling with what this looks like and operationally and the logistics of moving students around. But look forward to more information to come on that. But that's it, that's all I got.
Hold on, so we're going to respond to?
Well, yeah, I think that'll, thank you for that, Director Brooks. So I think this board as a whole has, we probably should re-ground in the building a better future framework and where this particular piece fits in that process, right? As we've been in this work since I started and slowly moving through this while we're handling everything else. So I think that's a great recommendation. As we move into the facilities section of this and as that goes to the Oversight Task Force, there was a slide earlier about how that whole process looks. But I think we can continue to re-ground that and connect back to that initial model that was laid out. I think it was early in, well, I'm not going to, that one right there. So that, that's the one-page overview of this entire Build a Better Future process. And we can circle back to make that more obvious. So I appreciate the question, Director Brooks. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to say, I love, I don't remember what your name is from, yes. I love what you just said because that was one of my questions about IT. Because it's on the list, but it's not in our strands. And you made a really good point that all of these careers really have some digital component to it. And I'm so proud of our system for having the one-to-one device system. And as we're learning in this pandemic, how much our digital existence is important that we learn. And I really appreciate that all these careers really need to have an underbetting in all of our schools of having digital literacy and awareness and skills as we move forward in employment. So thank you.
I had a couple of questions around the student surveys. So the percent of students who selected would or might register by strand, were students allowed to check more than one strand that they would be interested in? Okay, so I guess one of my, one of my concerns is that education's would or might is significantly lower than the other strands. Can you talk about that?
I can give you my anecdotal at this point. Our, our students don't have as much opportunity yet to experience what it's like to be a teacher. Now, one of my examples I would give you currently at Park Center, we have multiple unified classes where we are uncovering and many of our students are realizing in our unified program. We did a highlight of our Unified Facts class earlier this year, but it is where we have students aligned and specifically choosing to be in Unified Art, Unified FIED, and Unified Facts to be with some of our special ed students. It's giving our students an opportunity to realize they love leading and guiding. And we're starting to hear more of our students say, hey, you know what, I think maybe I could be a teacher. So it's, it is, if you will, almost a gateway for them to realize they're interested. And then we layer into a new course that will be offered next year that's an introduction to education. And then we also have a year-long course. So we're finding ways to introduce our students. And I think the longer we're doing programming like that, more of our students will realize they do want to teach. So that's part of it is introducing students and getting them to realize teaching could be really cool. So it's coming.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate that because we know that obviously in the business of education, we need more teachers. And we can see that as a growth industry and a very personally rewarding career field. But I was a little concerned to see such a significant difference in the student interest based on the survey results. My other question about the survey was about the percent of students interested in one or more proposed CTE strands. How many students were surveyed?
So let me, if I, I'll go back, but I think we had a, a mass number. It was over seven hundred students were given the survey. And it was seventy-three percent of the group that answered. So a student literally could have checked, I'm interested in all of them. They didn't have to choose one. They could say, I'm interested in all of them. I think I'd sign up. It sounds interesting. And the reality really is, as a ninth or tenth grader, a lot of students at that point aren't really sure about electives or what it might be. It was more to gauge interest because those will be the group, group of students in the near future that will be entering into some of the programs. the near future that will be entering into some of the programs.
So a concern that I have is not with the strands or anything like that, but really the space for students to participate. If we have, you know, 95% of students saying, yes, I would probably be interested in something, I don't know if we have enough availability for those electives for that many students if we were to survey the whole 20,000 kids. Well, I guess it would be less than that because it'd be secondary kids, but you get my point, is that my concern is like how, you know, really, the next piece I think is how do we make sure that we are creating the spaces for all of the students who desire participation, so we're not turning kids away from any of our programs?
So again, I think if, the, one of the first slides that I referenced was the 19 electives. And at some point, the hard part of being in high schools, you have to make choices. So then they have to prioritize what they're the most interested in. And truly, we offer more sections of more classes when more students ask for them. And I think to even what Sarah talked about with the health careers, we have lots of students who want to go to ASIO. Well, our students will get to go when there's more room. So hopefully with these new proposed strands, we have the opportunity to build more space, right, to add more so more students can. And it really is student-driven. That's, that slide is really, really powerful, knowing students get to choose. And this is where they have a full say in what they want to do rather than what they have to do. These are their get-tos. So they're gonna get to choose, and then they prioritize what they're the most interested in.
Yeah, so as a, as a parent also, you know, I, I've struggled with that with my own kids choosing courses, and, and I think it's been a long struggle that high school students have had for, for decades really. And how do we create more spaces for them to be able to participate in electives? So I really think that maybe aside from this, we should also be evaluating ways in which we can free up more elective space for kids to continue to participate in these things. Because like you said, they have to make hard choices, and if they're involved in a full-year course, like a music program or a language study, they're limited because those are elective courses, and that takes nine of those electives over their high school career, 12, depending on how long they do it, their high school career, that's a lot. So, yeah, I just wanted to voice that opinion and make sure that we are considering, continuing to evaluate those things, the space concerns. Overall though, I'm really impressed with the presentation, I really appreciate all the work you guys have done, the continuous updates, the meetings that we've had. One of my main concerns all along has really been the transportation issue, which I know has been worked on really diligently and moving forward in, in really positive ways so that kids can participate at different sites without having to worry about transportation issues. So that's really it for me, thanks.
And Director Douglas, can I say thank you for identifying the, the challenge as we balance required courses against electives in the amount of time? Like, that, that's a struggle I think the group went through, is how to narrow this down and be in as much alignment with our industry needs as possible. I think you also touched on an important point that was mentioned early on, that courses are offered in all six career fields in our high schools, in addition to the strand areas. And your comment earlier about education was a great one, because we all, we all think of teaching, and then there's so many other careers in education too. We might spur interest in being a counselor, or a speech and language pathologist, or a school psychologist, or some, you know, there's, there's, I think this exposure to the different options within a, a career field begins to build some of those ladders that were talked about before. So I think we have a great opportunity from a marketing standpoint around some of those strands, to get that initial interest, because maybe our students think of it in a narrow way, and how can we open up some possibilities for the different careers that might be within that career field? So those are all challenges in front of us as we roll it out and do the implementation work.
Yep. So it, kind of piggybacking on that, all of the other courses have opportunities to, you know, have professional speakers, to have people that might be in some fields kind of like science, like so just, it's not that the, that access to learning about careers or learning about future opportunities is limited to the strands. So I just want to make sure that we know that, because I know that we're always trying to make the coursework in the curriculum more applicable to what the opportunities are, what it means for your future, what it, what real-world application is, so I just don't want that to be missed in the conversation. And so, thank you Superintendent McIntyre. One question I did, so there's a lot of, it, it's been great to see the engagement actually in the community and seeing some of this work before today. So we did receive an email, and I did receive a communication from an educator that I thought brought up an important point about resourcing the strands and resourcing new pathways, new strands, new courses. So as far as the, the teacher licenses, are we asking teachers to do something different with their development or with their licensing? Are we incentivizing? Are we rewarding? And I know this gets complicated, but I'm, just, I want to address the educator side, are we, how are we ensuring that we've got, that we're supporting our educators who are moving into these more specialized type of opportunities for students?
One of the requirement, and, and we don't have a say about licensure is detected from MDE, and all those career fields and all the specialty strands, they're required to have CTE license to be able to tap into funding for CTE. So most of our, if not 85% of our teachers right now, they are CTE-licensed. So we get 35% from the state for all our CTE expenditures, including the salaries of our teachers. So, and we get about $100,000 a year from the feds, from Perkins, Perkins Grant, to help with the equipments and the consumables that the students are using. So, yes, so CTE licensure comes directly from MDE with a directive that before you teach a class, because we just don't want to get anybody in front of the class that just don't have the skills that is needed to do what it, you know. So we've done retraining, we've paid for staff development with, at the grants that we have to get the teachers ready for any of these changes that's gonna come to place. But what we don't do, we don't pay teachers to get the license that they need to teach these classes, so.
Is there an opportunity for us to do more there? I guess is maybe the crux of my, that was really helpful, and that was good clarity. Is there, do we need to do more? Is there, is there a need for us to do more to support that?
Yeah, it crosses over with our recruitment and retention efforts too, right, through our HR department, as we're working to expand there, really across just about every department in our district. So the short answer is yes, and we're still, I think, once we can narrow down and have the green light to move forward, now we start, start digging into how to make that happen, right? Because we're gonna definitely need to make sure we not only attract but retain the high-quality staff, we need to be really successful here. And I think that'll show through the evaluation process too. I was gonna make a comment earlier about as we move forward in implementation, how do we evaluate the success of things? And what's, like, even the success rate of our, our scholars that move on into these fields? I think we're getting better and better at finding out how, where they go and how well are they doing, and do they stay in a, I think our, our scholars now graduating are more willing to, to move across careers than maybe any of us were willing to do. The, the data just tells us they're more willing to make those moves. So we're getting more sophisticated at, did we do a good job, or do we need to do a better job with preparing them? And that starts with, who are we hiring and who are we putting in front of them as far as their teachers in these areas?
Yeah, and that actually leads me to another thought in terms of, do we have any data that correlates our students' academic outcomes? You know, we're talking about the achievement gap, we're talking, we want to make sure that we have the opportunities that really ignite kids' passions, and then kind of produce the fruit in the, in the kind of the academic side of things. So do we have any data correlations that says that when kids are in, in these strands, that they're having differential performance outcomes? It's just a curiosity, it's probably, it's probably not an answer to that, but something just to keep in mind.
We did collect that and provide it to the board last month as far as making the, I don't know Kelly, if you want to speak more to that?
I see Godfrey stepped up there too. Godfrey, do you want to say what you got ready?
We do, and it's just right, they put it out every year, MDE does, and 92% of students that take two or more CTE classes tends to graduate and go on to college. And the, this is really what really touched my heart, the, the four-year graduation gap narrowed with students that are taking CTE programs. Of course, people say, when people take, student takes CTE program, that kind of encourages them to come to school, and when you're in school, all the teachers can grab them, and before you know it, you graduate. So.
So Godfrey, I think you specifically, I know that Director Douglas had asked the question, and that information was compiled and sent to everybody, so I think that, I'm sorry, Godfrey, we-
No, that's real.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I said yes, I said yes.
Okay. It's hard to hear you way back here. Sorry, so I think you might have that.
Yeah, and, and I guess I'm also kind of asking for like that, where as we tackle this problem, like that we're, we're, we're finding, we want to find the solutions, we want to continue to do more of the solutions that are gonna drive a difference in the outcomes for our students, and, and that's kind of really what I want to stimulate the public conversation about.
Absolutely, and I would ask that there be trust in our experience as building leaders, again, between the four lead principals here, the decades of collective experience serving all three high schools, Principal Haughey served students from all three high schools in the ALC, Assistant Superintendent Parapart, Lead Principal at Brooklyn Middle and Park Center Senior High School. It's a short while ago, Park Center Senior High School, I believe it was in the 2013 graduation year, had the highest increase of on-time graduation rate of black students in the entire state, and there wasn't a close second. That occurs when we see students who, because it's, it's that, it's that percentage, 80% of your efforts is spent on 20% of the, of the, the goal. When we see in that 20%, in this case, we're talking about our kids, when we see them connect their why with their what, and what that looks like is, they have found a teacher or a set of teachers or a set of classes that they connect with and they engage in, and everything else falls into place. The noises, the distractions that were barriers to their, to their success are now out of sight because they are locked in. And that is the greatest gift, working in public education is when you see students who have been through the ups and downs, find their why. And with these nine pathways, and in the future of our, with our ability to propose additional courses and additional partnerships, that's what we're gonna see here. So there is quantitative data, but then there's the qualitative data, which is from our experience. Again, I ask you to trust us. Yes, we are completely focused on racial equity and increased achievements in our students, we have been through and through and through. These are the right pathways, and I ask for your support.
Yeah, I just have to say, I mean, I get really excited when I have been reading through this and listening tonight, I mean, having, you know, four kids in the district, kind of all different, 17 to four, and obviously not for my 17-year-old as much, but my younger, my younger kids, I'm just, I'm super excited, and, you know, the thoroughness of what has been presented and has worked, been worked on, it's just, it's really top-notch, and I, I'm looking at all of you because I'm also like, you manage buildings on top of all this, so I just really appreciate this. And I think that, you know, historic, when I think about strengthening CTE, I mean, there is a huge focus on addressing disparities within that, and historically, we know that racial disparities in our CTE programs, not ours, but just in general, throughout the years, decades, you know, have trapped students based on race and lower, you know, quality programs, I think we know that. And so the work that has been done here to tackle, to tackle that, the narrative, and then really ensuring that our students are set on a path of excellence and have the opportunities, and really addresses it head-on with these high-quality CTE programs that are in complete alignment with the direction of, of where we're going with our district. You know, I love, I love the difference when we talk about qualitative, quantitative, because it's about the belonging and the connectedness, and, you know, for sure academic excellence, but access and opportunity. And so I have full confidence that all the, you know, all the, like the Jamboard sessions are kind of, you know, what, what's in the way, what, you know, what's blocking this thing, that they'll be resolved, and, you know, we'll have further discussion. And then, you know, one of the other things that were highlighted, and I just, this is where I think the board, you know, we, I think we'd all love to be helpful, is because we know that there's, you know, the importance of partnership, you know, with different employees, and I think I saw kind of some light bulbs go off for, between different board members on like, ooh, you know, we have this connection, and just, you know, adding to that when it's appropriate. And so, yeah, so I'm just, I'm really excited, I think we're all really in agreement with the nine CTE programs, and I don't know Superintendent McIntyre, if you have anything you want to add at the end?
No, you all said it very well, so, unless there's further questions, I'll move us. I just want to say once again, thank you to this team and many others that have been a part of the work for, for, I think, every week for many months.
For a year.
Yeah.
Over a year.
And I just really appreciate how you've really stuck with it, and I'm excited about being able to launch this and implement and see the fruits of this hard work. So with that, I'll move us on to our next agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Next on our agenda is the enrollment update, and John Morsted's here to present to us. So we, tonight we're providing you with that enrollment update that we initially planned for in December, but we had to move to January, and a little silver lining there is we were able to add in some additional enrollment data from January, which will help in this presentation. And this is our preliminary information for next year, as we continue to plan for our staffing model for next year, as you've worked with the budget and enrollment and now how that drives our, our staffing. So John's here to provide you with that presentation, that'll give you some pictures of past enrollment as well as future projections and some of the process moving forward. So thank you, John.
Thank you Superintendent McIntyre, Chair Dawson Walton, and board members. So tonight's presentation is about enrollment trends and then future projections. Enrollment trends are reviewed annually at this time of the year in order to project enrollment for the next fiscal year and to make a new five-year projection so we can take a glance at our future. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide that overview of enrollment trends used in making the five-year projection. These projections are important for our decision-making process regarding budgeting and staffing for the upcoming school year. Most of the charts you will see are utilizing November 1st enrollment data, as this was originally intended for a December presentation. But because of that, we've been able to add to some of the slides to give you a little bit better picture. There was a notable enrollment change, most of the time we use November 1st as a date because it's, it's a pretty locked-in enrollment number for us. We've actually seen a change of roughly 110 students since November 1st till the first part of January, so we wanted to address that. Overall, district enrollment for fiscal year 2122, according to November 1st data, and we're, for the first couple of slides, we're looking what, at information that includes pre-K through 12, so stuff that would be an enrollment number you would see in a final financial report, this is what would match up to that. Originally, on November 1st, we actually increased last year's enrollment by 224 students, or 1.1%. Additionally, our K-12 specific enrollment of 20,165 students was, was 132 students less than we originally projected last fall with a 50% recapture rate included from students lost the previous year. Our actual capture rate came in at 32% of those students that we lost from the prior In addition to students coming into ASIO-area schools from other public school options, school choice means that some ASIO-area school residents choose options outside of our district. Please note when you're looking at this chart that the first four years are final data, and the 22-year is just preliminary data. The number of students opting into ASIO is indicated in the red section, declined this year versus last year by about 46 students, or a total of 1,380 students enrolling in. This chart shows ASIO-area schools' fall enrollment over the last five years broken out by elementary and secondary grade levels. The red line shows students served in secondary, the blue line is students served in elementary, so you can kind of see the trends versus just a bar chart. Typically, a thorough analysis of our five-year historical trend is a key component in projecting future enrollment. Over the past several years, we have seen enrollment overall stabilize and start to grow, particularly at the secondary level. Last year and this year, because of the impact of COVID-19, we've seen declines in both of those levels, and a sharp decline in 2021 at the elementary level is starting to see a little sign of recovery in the current year. Minnesota has Enrollment Options Program, better known as Open Enrollment. Families can make their choices to enroll their students in public schools that are not the school district in which they reside. Osseo Schools has consistently enrolled around thirteen to fourteen hundred students from other Minneapolis or Minnesota school districts into our district. Our overall open enrollment declined by forty-six students, as I said earlier. This total represents six point eight percent of our district's enrollment is open enrolled into our district. Most of these students come from the Anoka, Hennepin, Robinsdale, Minneapolis, and Brooklyn Center districts, although traditionally, we actually lose more students to those districts than we gain. This year, these open enrollment numbers typically grow throughout the year, so we'll continue to monitor these levels as we move through the school year. Included in the school board's packet are three additional documents that give you a little deeper dive into the data on enrollment as we start to move into how we did currently versus our projections and versus prior year. The first document is a projected FY22 enrollment versus what our final twenty-one numbers were. The second is the FY22 enrollment actual variance. So that is what did we anticipate receiving versus what actually came in by a breakdown of each school and grade level, the enrollment from the fall of twenty-two for fiscal year twenty-two compared to the final twenty-one enrollment. You'll see the red total at the bottom right-hand corner of the page indicates twenty-two, excuse me, a twenty-four student decrease overall in K-12. That's, this is an effective one-one number. Originally, that number was a positive ninety on November first. The final chart, oops, I'm sorry, I didn't catch myself. Okay, so the final chart, and I didn't put these charts on here because they're very, very hard to see, they're very wordy. So I wanted to make sure you have them in front of you. The final chart highlights actual enrollment versus our projection for the current year. And it shows variances by color cells highlighted in red for enrollment of ten or more students below the projection and in green for enrollments of ten or more above the projection. So this is where you can see the biggest impact in the decline in enrollment continues to be at the elementary level, where we came in five hundred and thirty-four students below projections. At the middle level, we were two hundred and four students below projection, and at the high schools, three hundred and thirty-eight below projection. However, this is the first official year of 279 Online, which saw enrollment gains of eight hundred and forty-three students. Overall, again, an adjusted to January first number, we are under projection by two hundred and forty-six students, or about 1.2%. While enrollment has declined uniformly across the district, there are a couple of schools that came in above projections by at least ten students, which were both elementaries, Fernbrook Elementary and Rush Creek Elementary. The detail provided in those previous charts gives good insight of exactly where the pandemic has affected our enrollment within the district. It's important to note that growth at Fernbrook is becoming evident. They were projected to have eight hundred and twenty-five students at the beginning of this year. As of one-one, they have eight hundred and sixty-four students, or thirty-nine above the projection. And that is also an increase of ninety-four students over last year's total of seven seventy. Now I want to take a look at where some of the Osseo area schools' residents who choose to attend other public schools are going. So as you're taking a look at this chart, you'll see open enrollment into other districts very flat, went down very slightly by eleven students, but two thousand eight hundred and seven students choose open enrollment in other districts. Enrollment into charter schools actually also decreased slightly to three thousand six hundred and seventy-six, or ten students less than the previous year. Families who choose public schools, seventy-four point seven percent of our resident students, we capture and they choose our schools. So for families who say, I want a public school option, I'm not going to go to private or homeschool, three out of every four students we are capturing in that group. This can be referred to as our resident capture rate. So this is up very slightly, about four tenths of a percent from the previous year. And we've been kind of traditionally trending in the seventy-five to seventy-six percent range as a whole. When you look at our students who do attend other public schools, where do they go? This chart will specifically show you the schools that contain, of all Minnesota school districts that enroll at least fifty students who reside in Osseo area schools. Anoka Hennepin being the largest, we lose seven hundred and eighty-six students this year to Anoka Hennepin, but gained four hundred and forty-three students from Anoka Hennepin. So you can see in the other three columns what our current year net gain and loss is and what the history for the last two years. As I said before, in most cases, we take a net loss in open enrollment, with the exception being Minneapolis, where we gained fifty-nine students this year. When looking at charter schools, again, here's a breakdown of schools that serve at least fifty of our students. Parnassus being the leader continues to add, their current cohorts, especially in kindergarten coming in, are in the range of eighty to ninety-five students per grade. But their graduating classes, so their current tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade classes are in the, what do I have, twenty to thirty student range. So we still have a couple more years of it looking like there's a big growth number coming until that stabilizes out. And then we're projecting that their total enrollment will probably stabilize right around eleven hundred students. And you can see the other areas, and again, some of the pluses and minuses. Athlos continues to grow, however, their kindergarten cohort of forty-eight is noticeably smaller than the one, first through fifth grade cohorts that they've been averaging, which are about seventy. And then I'd also note Noble Academy, which continues to see a steady decline in cohort size, averaging about thirty-five kids per grade. And we seem to be capturing most of those students back. As we shift to residents who are choosing to attend elsewhere, in the, through private schools, our numbers have increased a bit over the past two years, specifically pandemic-related. So twenty-five hundred and thirty-three students in the current year chose to go to a private. That's an increase of about fifty-five students. The key non-public schools where most of our residents go are Maranatha Christian at three hundred and twenty-nine students, St. Vincent de Paul, excuse me, at two forty-five, Heritage Christian, two oh six, Providence at one eighty-eight, and a few others under a hundred. This is, the chart shows an overall resident capture rate. If you took all residents who have a child, school-aged child, we are currently capturing about sixty-seven percent of those come to attend here at Osseo area schools. Nine point seven attend private or other, thirteen point two attend charters, and ten percent open enroll to different locations. So kindergarten is the most difficult grade to provide an enrollment projection for. Historically, what we use is the Hennepin County live birth number as an indicator of what our kindergarten enrollment will be five years after that. Traditionally, for us, our district residents, that equates to between fifteen and sixteen percent of the Hennepin County live birth number. So you'll see a decrease last year and then a little bit of an increase into the current year. From here, we apply our capture rates and trends to come up with cohorts as they grow through the system and create that projection. So the next page is our preliminary draft enrollment projection. All that trend information that we just talked about is used to create a five-year enrollment. The most important year is next year. And then we like to project out a little history so we can see what direction we're going. Are we projecting that we're going to grow or are we projecting we're going to decline? How does that have an effect on staffing and how we use our facilities and so on? So the orange highlighted area shows you the projection for next year and the yellow are the following four years based on our historical trends. Some points of interest, overall historical data shows trends in the past few years, which is on the left. Hennepin County birth rate data five years prior is at the very top. And what you'll see that if I point out is if you look at fiscal year twenty-six, second column from the right, there is a significant decline in Hennepin County live births. We actually had to go back to nineteen seventy-five to find a number that low. So you're talking fifty years since we've had that much of a number. So that is twenty-twenty's data. So five years from twenty-twenty is going to be the fall of twenty-five where those kids would enroll. How does that affect us? We're projecting that will cost about two hundred kindergarten students that year. And then you'll see, if you look on the FY27, they move to first grade and start matriculating through the process. The bottom line shows predicted overall growth of one hundred and twenty-eight students for next year. Again, I'd say this is preliminary, been working on this and having meetings with building leaders to discuss what they're seeing. Have had a number of meetings with different city leaders to discuss projects, especially as we head up towards the northwest portion of Maple Grove, Corcoran, Rogers, Dayton. And all that information will be bringing to ECHMAC in great detail. I'm going to overwhelm ECHMAC with detail, I think, this next time. But what it's showing us is there is a lot of growth potentially coming, and we're starting to see that in our trend data. Fernbrook is a good example. When, when we looked back to information that we had previously, it showed that the district should, in that general area, have about fourteen to fifteen hundred new housing units coming. This was in end of nineteen. That data today is twenty-nine hundred in some new housing units with space. So these, when I say new housing units, we're only talking about projects that have submitted an application to one of the cities and are in either the approval process or started construction. So those, that farm that someone has that they said, I'm just sitting waiting, or the big piece of land just west of us that Polty Homes owns that they've not submitted an application for, that's not in that number. So we're actually looking at something in the range of two thousand to twenty-eight hundred additional units on top of what we know of today that could potentially come within the district in that area in the next, let's say, you know, three to ten years. So, so the potential for growth is there, a lot of it just depends on the demand. So another way to look at the data and trend lines is just to kind of see the trends here. So the part to the left is our historical data, so you can kind of see where our secondary, again in red, was trending up and then kind of dipped a little bit and stabilized with the COVID years. And then see the decline, the big noticeable decline in the second, in the elementary. And then as you look through the, to the right side where the projections are going, you're going to see that we're projecting that the secondary is going to grow pretty substantially. The elementary starts to pick up, and then that kindergarten cohort in twenty-six comes in, lowers that number, and then it starts coming back up again. So as I mentioned, ECHMAC will be receiving detailed information on all of this projected and projected residential growth in the district at the next meeting, which is at the end of January. We have incorporated this growth information that we have into these projections. However, the opening of the Dayton Parkway exit and the planned extension of Highway six-ten, which the city of Maple Grove is telling us is tentatively planned for spring of twenty-four, that they'll start construction on, that will open up even more access to that northwest portion of the district and spur growth. Over the next coming weeks, we will finalize our grade level and site level enrollment projections for fiscal twenty-three. These projections will be used to prepare revenue budgets and staffing allocations and will inform facility planning into the next year. We will continue to monitor housing and economic trends carefully as we examine data with ECHMAC, and we will bring back more information on class size, including regional comparisons in March once the Metro ECSU class size study is, results have been released. And with that, I will turn things back over to Chair Dawson-Walton for questions.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments?
Sure. Thank you very much for a very thorough report and explaining the data to us in multiple ways so that we can see it from different viewpoints. I am wondering if part of the elementary school decline, how much of that is just part of kindergarten? And do we think that we recapture some of those students as, you know, maybe they miss kindergarten, but they go in the first grade?
Yeah, that's a great point. Kindergarten is clearly the grade that, especially last year, you saw a very noticeable decrease. What you really saw is, and I guess if I was in that situation of having a kindergartner, I would have been very tempted to hold my child back, really no matter what the age was, just in case. Or say, maybe I'm going to do a little bit of the educating on my own because of the unknowns of COVID. And do I want to, not knowing what that environment is going to be like. I do anticipate we will eventually see those kids come back in. However, typically when we're doing these projections, we want to be a little conservative with them. So as an example, when we originally projected that we would get fifty percent of the students back this year, and we ended up getting thirty-two, the second part of that projection was for next year, where we were going to project twenty-five percent more students would come back. We dropped that number down to about ten percent, just again, trying to kind of look at what we would, what did we really get? And what do we really think is accurate and more reliable than overprojecting and end up making a staffing model that ultimately, we're not necessarily using the money appropriately for.
Director Grady, if I may add, some of you may remember this conversation with Ron Meyer. When we set that fifty percent target at first, that was actually more aggressive than some of our neighbors who set that target at twenty-five percent. So we, we just didn't know, and we had that conversation. We, we were hopeful to get fifty percent return rate, now we got thirty-two. But we were, I remember vividly because we were wrestling with what, how do we even know what to set that target for? We thought, well, let's set it higher, that was our goal, right?
Well, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at that moment, our assumption would be that the pandemic would be over.
Winding down at a minute.
Winding down, rather than, you know, as we are in year two of that. So that's totally reasonable. To change the, you know, the expectation based on that assumption.
And even with our, our change from November one to now, where we're down another hundred and ten students, it's very specifically pandemic-related. And you can see that. So again, I anticipate at some point, those students will probably come back. But it's, it's a hard thing to bet on. It's hard, hard to quantify where exactly to put that. So you ultimately have to play based on the numbers we have and some hunches and some good conversations with building leaders to say, hey, this is what we see traditionally.
Couple additional contextual things that might help the board is the metro at least, metro-wide really experienced about a two to four percent change in enrollment, mainly decline. And that capture rate concept, really because of the mobility we were seeing and still experiencing as the ebbs and flows of the pandemic have happened, whether it's illness, job loss, housing loss, just the economic ups and downs. And for us to come back and be only off 1.2%, you know, we'd love to see it higher. But I think we, we did a reasonably good job trying to guess at where we think we should be. And, you know, we're aspiring to get a higher capture rate. But metro-wide, it was, our story is very similar, and in other places experienced maybe a significant, I don't know, if you've heard talk more of the other districts, but that two to four percent raise been the common superintendent conversation.
Yeah, it's, it's very accurate. And even in, you know, so as we look at our cohort retention, so you know, your kindergarten class last year that became your first-grade class this year, in some of the buildings, all those kids came back, and we could see that trend. So you'd say, hey, and they grew by a little bit. So you got 1.2% or a hundred and two percent of that class from kindergarten to first grade. In another building, only eighty-eight percent came back. So when you have that big anomaly and we're looking to project, we try to kind of, you know, do the, when you're, when you're doing a projection, you're going to throw out the high and the low. So we want to take that low out and say, you know, let's, let's project over a different set of years or we're going to look at six years, but we're going to drop that first year out so we can trend the rest of the data to try to get a better average on what that number is going to be, so we don't skew it too much.
Right, well, and I would also guess that the risk assessment is different for different communities at different schools in terms of whether or not they feel like their kids need to be in school or at home.
And, and, you know, projecting for 279 Online is a guess.
Yeah.
We have, we have the current year, we have a few months of history to know where we're at. We know that traditionally in other districts that have had online programs running for a number of years, that they traditionally grow. You know, so we're at least trying to hold stable and maybe add a little bit of growth. But at a minimum, we'll probably just hold pretty stable, at least for the projections what we have today. But that is a variable that is really hard, I mean, ultimately, we're just taking a guess with that one.
Thank you.
Yeah, from my standpoint, serving on ECHMAC, you know, we dig into this regularly. And I think for me, it's going to be that continued conversation for the building of a better future, the long-term goals, as we think about overcapacity potential, undercapacity strands, how we put that all together in our future vision for where we need to go to optimize all of those elements. So that, that's more of the future conversation, but I appreciate all of the great work, and we'll continue to dig into it at ECHMAC.
There's lots of good stuff.
Thank you.
You know, you actually already answered one of mine, which is, I think it's just been a pending question on what our growth opportunities are with 279 Online, particularly seeing as eight hundred and thirty above. on what our growth opportunities are with two-seven-nine online, particularly seeing this eight-hundred-and-thirty projection. So I won't, I won't ask that. I think the one question I have is, you know, we're always looking for, regardless of the topic, always asking for more localized data. And so when you talked about the birth rates across Hennepin County, it sort of got me thinking how different is our district versus the rest of the county? I know in many ways, whether you're on the east side or the west side, our district just feels, our side of town just feels kind of unique. And so, yeah, just, and then especially as we talk about, you know, the two-thousand-plus homes that are potentially being built on the northwest side. If we're able to somehow break that down and figure out what our actual birth rate projection should be based on past trends, is it actually consistent with the rest of Hennepin County, or is it different? That's kind of my only thought on that, but other than that, thank you.
But I would say it's, it's a great point, and what, you know, as, as I get a little more experience within this district, one of the things that I tend to do with enrollment is run multiple projection models, so I can compare them and see. So like with kindergarten, we would also wanna, rather than just take a Hennepin County birth rate number, we wanna compare to just our cohort and survival that as a separate method. So going forward, I want to be able to address that anyway, just because I think it's a good practice to make sure we can kind of do our own checks and balances. So the more accurate we can give a number, it just makes things easier for the LTL to be able to staff properly, you know, obviously that continuity of your staff in a building, so we're not making a bunch of last-minute changes. We, we want those teams to be set so they can focus on what they're there for, not worrying about, well, wait a second, I need another person here or that, because we missed on a projection badly. That's really our goal, is to try to smooth the process so that more focus is on learning and on other things.
I have a couple of questions, but just to add on to that, I would say that historically in my time on the board, the enrollment, Hennepin County enrollment data has been so nearly accurate, sometimes within only one or two students. It's been remarkably accurate, which I always find a little bit surprising because of the sentiment that you just expressed, because it does feel like we're kind of in our own bubble over here. Sometimes I feel like we're our own county, but we're not. Anyways, so what I wanted to ask was how many students in DLA are from other schools? Not others, not within our district, outside of our district?
It's about ten to twelve percent right now.
How many students is that?
So you're talking a hundred.
Okay.
Now, that's, that, and as Director Thomas kind of mentioned, or Director Brooks, sorry, mentioned, so with, with two-seven-nine online, the opportunity to get the word out that we have the ability to take more students is really our ability to bring people in. You know, there's a number of districts around us that have waiting lists for their programs, because they simply don't have staff to handle it. If we have a competitive advantage and have that, and have a nice program with good rigor that can handle it and be, you know, a good example, we want to make sure that we're getting that message out to other, even to other districts. There are situations where we can make agreements with other districts and say, you can send your kids to us. We'll make a financial agreement for, call it a tuition agreement like we would with a college for PSEO. It's the same thing, where their students can come here, but still graduate from their school. So, so we can work, and we're working through that with communications and a number of the two-seven-nine online team to see what our options are to try to grow that enrollment, because it's, it's certainly the, the low-hanging fruit for, for things we can do to improve numbers if you're trying to get kids up, which then allows some more things to be able to happen in other areas, because you start to create a little more discretionary income, discretionary spending money that could be put towards another program, or you could add another thread to CTE, because you have the funding to be able to go towards it. So it's, it's clearly, as I come in, it's, it's the area that I want to see if we can grow. That's, that's a high priority for me from an enrollment standpoint.
Yeah, I think that's really great. There was a online program attached to a high school, I want to say like in Wilmer or Worthington, I don't know, somewhere south Minnesota, south Minnesota area, and that ultimately ended up failing, because in order to participate in the online education, which a lot of people were very interested in, that meant that they would be, that would be their home district, and then they would be disqualified from participating in sports in their community, which was a huge, huge disadvantage for students who wanted online learning, but also wanted to participate in sports locally. And so I think with the growth that we have in our online program already, I think it's a very promising opportunity for a lot of kids, and then just hearing anecdotally from people who've been participating in it, that they enjoy it, their kids are thriving and doing well. So I really think that that's a great area to continue to move forward on and to pursue whether or not we can offer those things. So I appreciate that. My next question is around our resident overall capture rate. Right now, it's at sixty-seven percent, which is just a few percentage points of difference, gradually declining from the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen rate. But how does that compare to our neighboring districts?
I have not pulled the specific data on that, but being that, you know, so, so part of that picture is a little bit of the geography of there, there are so many charter schools right within our boundary that are gonna draw the predominant number of their kids are gonna come from within, because it's, it's close, it's geographic. I don't, you know, I live in Saint, the Saint Michael Albertville area. I doubt I would choose a charter school in the Maple Grove area just because of having to drive so far to come in. So you're gonna find something a little bit closer to us. I don't have the, the specific data, just haven't asked, thought to ask about that, so it's a good question, and we can certainly see what we can find from our other colleagues in other districts around us. But, but traditionally, I mean, I know, from looking at enrollment in, when I was outside of this district, this district's percentage going to charter, and that is high comparatively, for sure. Can't compare necessarily to Minneapolis, but I think if you're looking at other districts that might have a couple charter schools, there, there are just a whole lot less kids going to them. So, so we lose a lot of kids, I mean, I think sixty-seven percent. To me, I was a little shocked when I saw that number. I expected our, the capture rate that we had for anyone attending any public school, I expected that to be our overall, and another number to be a little higher, so I was hoping for at least three out of four. So two out of three, great, can we improve on it? Absolutely.
Yeah, that's been a conversation, I feel like, that we've been having my entire time on the board, is how do we improve our capture rate? And so it is concerning to me that I'm still seeing a decline in that over the last several years. I think that it would be very valuable for us to evaluate our neighboring districts and find out what their capture rate is, particularly ones that are in physical close proximity to us, who may also be sent, residents of their communities may also be sending their children to charter schools within our district boundaries. But also just looking at the number of students who are leaving to go to the various different places, the charter schools, and then also the private schools in this diagram, and also our other neighboring public schools. We're, we're definitely losing more children than we're bringing in. And I think we have a lot of really great things to offer, and so what concerns me really is why? Why is that the case, and why does it continue to be the case, despite all of the wonderful things that we're doing in our district to improve our facilities and create more opportunities? And being a leader in equity, all of the things that we continue to do and move forward on don't seem to be moving the dial on our capture rate.
So I would add that the Morris Leatherman survey in August gave us some windows into that, on why, why they come to us and why they go to somewhere else, and we maybe should dust that off a bit, to, just to help us in our efforts, based on those survey results. So they did give us some insight on what were the key factors for families that leave our district or, or come to us from another district, right? And, but we haven't looked at that in a couple of months, so that's something we could help inform that, that conversation a bit more.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, thanks for this overview. I think that, I mean, I know at AMSD, we just did a presentation to our legislators, and I can't remember what district it was, but the low birth weight rates come up in every single conversation, so there's a huge impact. And I think it, it has been declining over several years, but, you know, now it's, it's there. And, and I think that I would be interested in other neighboring districts, but I also think that their, their board's probably having these same questions of like, where's everybody, you know, why are people leaving? So I think that's good. And I think that, you know, with these, the enrollment projections, I, what Director, Director Simons had really resonated with me, just because we were both on the Build a Better Future work group, and it is that, you know, kind of under and overcapacity, and I know that's not right this moment, but this obviously data really goes into that. So, you know, kind of what, what are we doing as a district to address not only overcapacity, but our undercapacity? Good thing on ECHMAC now, for this year, so I'll be learning a lot more about that, so, I think, thank you. Superintendent McIntyre, do you have any other?
No, unless there's any other comments or questions from the board.
Yeah, I, we certainly do not need to talk about this today, but as we look at ways to increase enrollment, and going back to your comment about marketing, you know, what we do have, so two-seven-nine online, our CTE programs that we're all excited about, particularly two-seven-nine online. I'm not a native Minnesotan, so I don't know very many ISD numbers outside of ours. So I don't know if we've thought about or talked about essentially changing the name of that school, but I, I guess I do wonder if that could potentially help as we market, and hopefully to capture more students, but we can talk about that.
It has come up in a couple of conversations, to say, you know, how, how can we brand this, this, so it's gonna help? I mean, the only, the only requirement to be in the program is you live within the state of Minnesota, that's it. Anybody can, can enroll based on that parameter, that's it. So how can we make sure that every, as many of the people who, within the state, have that need or that desire to be in that program, we want to be considered in that conversation? So I think that's, that's part of what we're, we're working on, but we're, we're at the pretty beginning stages of that right now.
Okay, thank you, John. Taking notes on some of the follow-ups here, so we'll continue to provide some additional information on some of those follow-up questions. So next is our, as our COVID team kind of comes in, our administrative team's gonna share a COVID preparedness plan update, and you do have some copies at your seats here, because we try to make sure we're grabbing the most recent information that's continually changing, as you know. Maybe just to set the foundation here, as Troy and team are getting ready. You know, and reflecting on this, once again, since the spring of twenty-twenty, our families, you know, we continue to ask them to adjust and make changes time and time again to the ever-changing impacts of, of the pandemic. And in order to address the, the very short-term, significant downturn in available staff we recently experienced last week, especially coming off winter break, you know, all of our district schools moved, temporarily moved to online learning and with the plan to return on Monday, January twenty-fourth. So you can imagine the difficulty of a decision like that. This, this news has been understandably challenging for some and welcomed by others, honestly, but one that our district was not hoping to make, as we believe, you know, in-person, online, in-person learning in our classrooms is really what we all aspire to, and really believe is the best for our scholars and our families and our staff. I do want to just make the comment that I really appreciate that our scholars, their families and our staff, every, everything everyone's been doing to try to do the best to support us and remain flexible during such a challenging time. You know, as a parent, I'm living it myself, like many of you, and sudden alterations in schedules and delivery of edu, of education's very challenging. And again, we, we believe that that in-person learning is the most effective when we can do that. However, the latest surge in illness to our, our staff has impacted our system really like never before, and talking with Laurel as we look back in time, maybe never, like never before. With the level of absenteeism, and that's been so high, that it's really created serious operational challenges for us and put the safety of our students at risk by not being able to provide just a standard of care in regards to basic services and not meeting student needs with the shortage of people. So although the hope was to be able to look at this learning model changes school by school, it all really just came all at once, quickly across the system pervasively, and impacted us district-wide in each and every site, and really in every department. Nearly every site in the district had double-digit absent rates as soon as we came back from break, with over twenty of our thirty sites, over fifteen percent, some pushing twenty-five percent. Over six sites had that level of rate. So we've had, you know, over six hundred absences on, on one day and over five hundred on other days. Multiple days of this was unprecedented. So that resulted in well over sixty and higher unfilled teaching positions in the district, which really creates serious levels of concern due to those absences, and it really impacts us beyond the classroom. It's impacting us with operational things like transportation, food service, our custodial staff in cleaning, our health office staff, and even our childcare offerings. So without the staff to really operate those classrooms and departments, we simply couldn't take any longer and kind of take those kind of risks for the health and safety of not only our students, but, but our staff as well that our stakeholders expect of us. So I, I hope it's a temporary change, really, that is exactly what we're trying to do. By moving to online learning, we can get our staff healthier, ready to better serve our, our scholars and families. As you can imagine, we're evaluating and monitoring our status in all areas. I used to say daily, I feel like it's hourly now. We're literally talking constantly, because things, you know, are that fluid. And really continuing to evaluate and develop our, our criteria and our expectations for our return, just always being ready to anticipate any future moves that are maybe needed. So by the end of the week, we'll be communicating again, you know, confirming our return, or hopefully not, but if we need to continue to extend that, we'll, we'll communicate that as well. Either way, we'll be communicating later about the end of the week. But right now, again, our anticipated return date is still Monday, January twenty-fourth. So our purpose tonight is to, to share with you what we know today, and it may already be different by eight o'clock than what we knew at four o'clock, that's just been some of our realities lately, as we work through this process this week. I'm constantly in communication with other districts, they're in the same boat as we're struggling to know what, what's coming next, and hopefully seeing much improved, improving conditions, and really just from the health and safety of our, our people that do a tremendous job in our district. So to kind of tell that story, I got Troy and Colin and Dave, and we've asked Laurel Anderson to also join in with us to help share with you what we know today and what we're continuing to monitor throughout the week. So thank you, Troy.
All right, well, good evening. Chair Dawson-Walton, school board members in our audience, and Superintendent McIntyre. As Superintendent McIntyre said, it's literally by the hour, and sometimes when I get home, my wife asks me if I have a new best friend on email and text, because I'm talking to the superintendent pretty much throughout the day and night and weekends, so.
It's two of us, Troy.
Yeah, what's that?
It's two of us.
Two of us, yes, yes. And so, so I reflected on that when he said that, and I was kind of chuckling a little bit when it came up, but.
If you add in the weather, it's at four in the morning, too, so.
Yes. What was nice about today is we didn't have weather today, so I didn't have to start at four AM. But I've had a few of these where it's weather in the morning, board updates in the evening, and it's, it's a long day, but we do have weather coming in, it's getting cold again, just to be prepared, so. But we should be good for tomorrow, we only have a handful of routes that were, that are running. So I did want to just share some updates. I thought we'd do the same format that we did last time, kind of laying out the sequence of things. We talked about considerations back in early November, wasn't very clear. Started to get into focus a little bit into December, and then after break, some things really came to light. And so we'll share those updates today. I've invited my team and Laurel as well to share with you some of the details to get into it and kind of give you, I think, a little deeper picture of some of the stuff that's going on. So talking a little bit about the district case rates in the coming weeks. In a little bit, Colin will come up and we'll share a little bit of the slides on what our case rates look like. But I'll say this, in the first seventeen days, and I had to modify this a couple of times, because we originally planned to present to you last week, in the first seventeen days, we've had sixteen-hundred-and-twenty positive cases that our teams worked through, another four-hundred-and-seventy-five cases that are symptomatic. This has been extremely busy. We have several hundred hours of labor just in the trying to, to respond and communicate the families. And, you know, at some points, we were so far behind, and we pulled resources from multiple areas. I got transportation admin, we've got, Colin shared some baby pictures with a former retiree and brought her out of retirement to, he kind of tooled her in with the pictures of his cute son, and next thing you know, she's on our team helping us out. So we work in every variety of way to try to get all the resources we can to, to help us. us to try to keep up because our, you know, our families expect us to respond and communicate when these events occur and, and when we have students that are positive. So Colin will jump into that. Um, and then Laurel will jump in a little bit to talk about staff shortages and what that looks like. I will give you an update right now about nursing. Um, I've been working very closely with our nursing team and as of today, we are still short seven nurses in, in assigned sites and another three float nurses. Um, we do still have our 10 IEA, um, staff that are helping us. And right up till before we moved to online learning, um, we started having some really deep conversations with our, uh, our nursing team because they were pretty, they're pretty concerned about what was occurring and what was, um, where their gaps were and they needed help. And so we started brainstorming. I worked with, uh, Dr. Bass and Melissa, our, our district nurse, and Kate Emmons and Student Services and Jill Laney. And, uh, we were working on, um, trying to staff in an additional five EA, five IEA consultants to help spread some of the workload as we were preparing for the, pretty much, I'd like to call it the onslaught that occurred in the last two weeks with our numbers. And I would say by the time we come back, we're going to have two or three of those five additional positions ready. And then we're working with our consultant to get the other two hired, so hopefully we can help, especially at our elementary level. Most of our 10 IEA consultants are working at our large sites like our secondary high schools and middle schools. From a school bus driver shortage, I was just connecting with them today when we went into break, uh, or when we went into online learning, we're in a situation where we had about 20 open routes with unassigned drivers and we were averaging 15 to 20 call-ins a day. And so far, we've been able to stabilize and maintain service by splitting, cutting and chopping routes, but we're at that point where we were nearly prepared to communicate to staff and we had the alert on our webpage, "You might not have a bus today" is how close it was, which is something that you've heard or experienced or seen in Robbinsdale, Minneapolis and St. Paul. Um, we've been positioned very well, but it was hitting the, the bus companies just as rapidly as it was our system. So that was pretty significant for us as well. And we'll come back and Laurel will give an update here in a little bit about staffing on that. The next big area was the vaccination rates for five to 11 and 12 to 18-year-olds. Uh, Dave will have an opportunity to provide some updates. We've had some movement on the stats on that and we'll share where, what that looks like and how we've been improving on that. And of course, since the last time we've talked, there's been the opportunity for booster shots for five to 11-year-olds, um, and then the continuation of booster shots for 12 and up. And now there's conversation that, um, the FDA is approving the opportunity for, um, four and all the way down to, I believe, six months, but I don't know where that's quite at yet. So there's some updates coming on that. Um, and one of the big changes this year or in the last, uh, week, week and a half was the CDC change on quarantine periods. Um, Dave will talk a little bit about that on a slide and give you some updates of how that's changed and impacted our system and, and what things we benefited, benefited from and what things we're noticing already that we need to be aware of as well. Um, later in the presentation, I'll give you a quick update on rapid antigen testing. We've been very busy in that area and providing a lot of opportunity for families to receive free antigen test kits. So I'll give you a little update on that. And then, um, one thing I'll share with you right now, the Minnesota OSHA requirement. As many of you know, the Supreme Court has blocked, um, the, the Biden administration in regards to that. And so what I would share with you there is we had already begun a detailed process of collecting information, setting up the program. We had a staff in place to be ready for it because we really didn't know. It did go into effect and into law on January 10th and that's when we began our work of collecting that data. At this time, we have stopped all data collection. We've notified the staff of that and we're waiting because as many of you may know, the, the Supreme Court refers it back to the lower court. We don't know where that's going to go yet, so we're going to wait and see. And then from there, we'll, we'll determine any next steps from that regard. But I, at this point, I can't imagine any additional action being taken, but we want to be prepared if it is. We have the methods and, and processes in place. Um, at the time of pause, we had collection of about half of our employees' vaccination, um, information. We knew going into it that 84% of our staff were fully vac, not, stop using the word "fully vaccinated" to this day, that definition's changing, but that were vaccinated with the two-shot or one-shot system. So that's a little bit about OSHA, where we're headed with that. And then the last, um, piece there is on January 19th, the expiration for the federal requirement of masks on public transit. As I shared last time, that was extended through March 18th. And so there's nothing to, to report. There is nothing new there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laurel and I'll be back to give you a couple of updates here.
Thank you, Troy. Superintendent McIntyre highlighted for you, um, this has been an unprecedented number of absences that we have experienced. I've been in this district for 30 years. I have never seen anything like this. So what I provided for you today is the two days before winter break, and these are the absences for the entire system. The first column is the total absences and percent. And then I just highlighted some of our frontline worker employee groups. It's not all employee groups so that you can see the total number of staff that reported absences in absence management. So two days before winter break and then the two weeks after winter break. Now, as you'll note, on the 11th, we went online for secondary sites and on the 12th, we went online for secondary and elementary. So to put this into context, when I went back into our data for January of 2019, so pre-pandemic, when, when I looked at the first six days after winter break, the average number of absences for the entire system was 289. For 2020, that was right before the pandemic, so January again, was 290. This year, for the first six days after break, the average absences was 440. The absences that are in absence management don't represent all of the absences in our system. We also have unfilled absences that are not reflected in absence management. So we have to date 62 ESP postings. That doesn't equate necessarily to 62 ESP openings because some are for multiple sites. For example, Kid Stop will post an ESP opening with multiple people that they can fill. We have 24 teacher positions posted. Most of those are reflected because they require a sub. So those are mostly in absence management. We have eight RNLPN positions and that again, has some multiple positions. So when you see RNLPN, um, of five or eight, that is not reflective of all of the absences because it's absences plus open positions. So this is a conservative number of open positions or people that we have not in the system that we normally would have. We reached an unprecedented number of staff absences and we were not able to operationalize our work. On Saturday, Sunday nights, we had Lisa McLaren and I were working on it. We filled with Jeremy's team. We had over 40 people from the ESC. We filled it. We got it down to a great number. So as an example, Park Center and Oseo Senior each had three unfilled absences. We had all the rest filled. At 5:30 in the morning, when I opened up absence management, Park Center had nine, Oseo Senior had eight. In the next two hours, I was getting texts from Principal Vernig. They had three staff that just tested positive and three more waiting in the isolation room to test. It was unmanageable and it was not good for our students at that point in time. And I have to express a huge thank you to all of our staff because when I went out to sites with Kelly and we went to secondary sites, that's what we heard. We are doing this right now on Friday because every single staff member is jumping in to help out and support our kids. And they're doing everything they possibly can to keep things running. And we couldn't continue. As much as we wanted to be in person, we simply could not continue. As the time goes on, on this chart, when we moved into online learning, what we know is that staff who are symptomatic or maybe have a cold and normally wouldn't be coming to work, were able to work remotely. So one of the things positively that we did hear is that some of our parents were saying, "Hey, my, my student got to learn directly from their teacher and they haven't had that for a while because we had this number of absences." So they were doing it synchronously, online with their teacher directly, and they really appreciated that opportunity. When we look at how can we run operationally, I'm looking at the data with my team. When we hit 5% of our system absences or at a site when we're at 5%, I start to get a little nervous. We start to pay closer attention to it. And when we get to that 10% mark for either teachers or ESPs or for the whole site, we're really having a, a much larger conversation. We're talking to our principals. How can we support you? What support do you need? Because as you know, it's not just teachers that get substitutes. Our ESPs only get substitutes for their setting three positions and most of those are going unfilled right now. So I think two weeks ago, we had over almost 200 ESPs of which we had only about 19 filled. So those positions are not being available for our students. I also just wanted to share that since November, I was able to hire 16 continuous subs, so they are working. We are being delayed a little bit by Pelsby. We had some people that we hired, I hired at the end of November that are still waiting on their license, but every site does have a continuous sub assigned to them and several of our sites have two now. So our goal is to get two continuous subs at every site. Again, those are for teaching positions and we want to be thinking as we operationalize, how do we continue to operate all of our key positions that are working directly with And our, our senior, high comprehensive senior high principals are here as well. If there were questions, they were here already, so we asked them to stay in case, um, you had specific questions about how it was running at the sites. So I'll open it up for questions.
I have some questions. So you, you mentioned the continuous subs. I think that's really, really great progress, um, towards our goals and keeping, um, all of our classes and positions filled. Um, but I'm wondering about those setting three positions for the ESPs, about potentially getting continuous subs for those roles.
We do already have ESP floats and those are specialized for our setting three positions. We have four allocated and we can absolutely look at more. What we're challenged with is that we have, I think it's, you know, like I said, 62 openings. So we're having a hard time finding regular positions. They do get benefits, so we're trying to advertise that as much as possible and we'll continue to do that. The, the number of employees, the number of applicants is very low. So we will continue to add that as we can.
Okay. So it sounds like that, um, maybe we need a little bit of support from our recruitment department to help with that, um, filling those roles?
Yep. We have, we have a job fair in two weeks.
Yeah.
And she has been out there trying to, to do that work.
Yeah. I know it's really hard right now.
It is.
Yeah. Okay. Um, and that's all, the only question I have on this slide right now.
I, um, I do have one question, but, um, no questions for the principals. I just want to say, um, thank you for everything that you have been dealing with. Particularly thank you to our, our educators, ESPs, custodial staff, our nurses for sure. Um, you know, I know that staff were struggling long before these numbers got to where they are. Um, and to imagine what the day-to-day was like, um, with such a high percentage of absences is something I can't, I can barely wrap my head around. So, um, I commend the district for taking such swift action. Um, I admit it completely caught me off guard. I did not see us going a distance, nor did I see numbers getting this high. So, um, yeah, just thank you to everyone and, you know, I, we're thinking of you, um, even though sometimes it feels like there's not a whole lot we can do, uh, to help and support during this pandemic. Um, one of the questions I do have on this slide, um, as we get lower, we start to see the numbers go down and it looks like they're sort of stabilizing. Um, and one of the concerns that I have is under-reporting. Um, so if staff are at home, you know, are they less motivated to get tested as much? Are they less likely to report? Um, and then what does that mean as we look toward the end at going back to in-person? Um, so how are we?
Yeah, that's a great question. Superintendent McIntyre and I were talking about today. How, how do we know what the reality is? Our principals have asked staff to report if they're positive to the COVID team. Where I think we might be under-reporting, where I know we're under-reporting, is those who might have a cold, some of those symptoms, that normally they would report because they're not supposed to come to work per the COVID regulations. But because we're working in an online environment, they are absolutely able to work and so are not reporting it. Um, we are asking our principals to keep continuous conversation with our staff. I know, I think it was Dr. Becker, you had a number of staff test positive today and report that. So we're, we're encouraging staff to continue testing. You can get your four free tests today. It's open, so go out and get those and, um, continue to try to monitor and especially towards the end of the week, as we're making decisions, um, if they're regularly testing and they can let us know so that we can keep on top of it. I'm very, I'm very concerned about coming back prematurely, exposing students and staff again, and then having to put us back into a situation where we have to go online. I think that's not fair to students, it's not fair to staff, and I don't want to have to do that if we can avoid it.
Yeah. That's it. Thank you.
I did have one more question, but I can wait.
Go ahead. Okay. So this is just a, a little bit outside of the box, I would say, um, but I've heard from a number of families or students who have children in secondary schools, particularly our high schools, who've experienced exactly what you're talking about, not having their teacher in their classroom for several days at a time or maybe even a week or two. Um, and right before we ended up shifting to distance learning temporarily, some of those students reported that they were, um, multiple classes in, um, like their auditorium or in the gym or, or something like that for their class period. And a suggestion was made that I wasn't sure if it was explored or not, or if it would even be realistic to consider, was why can't we or could we, in those situations, um, teach lecture style and then reallocate some of the other teachers? You know, like take a core class, for example, like in English, something where everybody at that grade level is participating in English. Um, and then use some of, have one staff member from that department teach that course while the other teachers can help fill some of those other areas.
I think that's a great suggestion if you have pre-planning time.
Yeah.
So I had eight ESPs at 9:30 at night email. I could see, I was copied on the email. They were working outside of their hours just to proactively try to get things filled. And then like I described, we had what we thought was filled and then we had another 12 more absences that it, I don't know that they could manage that on a day-to-day basis because it's happening hourly.
Sure.
So while I appreciate that, I don't think it's manageable.
Got to go up, Sarah.
Sorry. Sorry, you guys. The piece that I would add to this, because we were one of those sites, I had seven classrooms in my auditorium. Um, and, and you're right, and if it was all the same subject, for example, you could. But we had science teachers out, we had math teachers out, we had English teachers out. So you couldn't realistically do a lecture style with all those classes because of how the schedule goes and who's absent for that day. So then it becomes problematic from that standpoint. So it just feasibly was not possible to have any sort of learning going on because we had 21, or well, 210 kids in the auditorium.
And that doesn't help our chances of healthy environments when you sustain longer periods of time with larger numbers of kids together.
That was it. Thank you.
I would just like to also say thank you to the, um, the cabinet members and the ESC district leaders who also filled those positions, trying, just trying to keep us limping along those last few days. And I really appreciate the work that you and your team have done, Laurel, to keep track of all these numbers and try to keep. to keep track of all these numbers and try to keep the communication open so that we can try as best as we can to accurately plan, which is tough in a crisis. So thank you.
Thank you. And we also, I just want to express the fact that, you know, we all have a desire to move our mission forward. And we all had to stop everything that we were doing and focus on this for our kids. And it's important. And we weren't able to do any other work, essentially. So as I think about being in an online environment this week, we've been actually able to come back and do some of our core work again. And so I'm also thinking about balancing that. And how many times can we pull our ESC staff to sites? And they're not, we are so appreciative of their willingness. They're also not trained in how to be a sub, and how to do the building procedures and all of those things. So I think they are trying as best they can. And they're also feeling a little awkward and not prepared either for that environment. So thank you.
My other one.
One other piece, just to remind you, while we've been at home, students who have been ill and had to be at home and couldn't do school could turn their cameras on and could do school. I think that's the other piece of all of our students who've been quarantined, close contact. As much as it's not optimal, they had an opportunity to see their teachers. And I just, this last week, between staff meeting and department chair meeting, teachers talking about more kids. They've seen more kids since we've been home because of that. So I don't want to lose sight of that piece either. That before, if students were home, they were trying to figure it out themselves via Schoology. This way, we have an opportunity going both ways. The teachers might not be able to come to school, but they feel well enough to teach. Same thing for our students. So please don't lose sight of that part, too. I think that was a win for students who are at home.
That's a really good point. Thank you for making that. And I'm wondering if we'll also be looking at student absences as well? Because it's not just teachers that are getting sick.
I believe in my daily updates last week to the board. I hope I included it, but it was a daily update to you all with a lot of data, probably more than you'd ever care to see. We were averaging 17% of our district out. Some buildings as high as 25% or more. So at least one of every four students in many of our sites was not in school, to Principal Miller's thinks.
Do we have the capacity to get a sense of how many of our students are still sick or still testing positive?
Well, you'll get more of that here coming up in other slides.
Okay, thank you.
I think the other parts I'd add, and thank you, Laurel, for taking the time to describe this. As you look at that slide, the slide right there, what districts around the metro are learning, is that 15% mark is the tipping point? And it's even 14 or 13 is seriously challenging us. So then it comes into how many sites? If it was one or two or three sites, it's one thing. But when it was the majority, 20 or more of our 30 sites, we couldn't run even our district-wide operations when it comes to just the basic food, transportation, health services, childcare. Brian had 50 absences in one day in childcare and only had nine subs. So all those things kind of played into it. So those are the things we're looking at as we move through the week. And what are some of the criteria or thresholds we think we can manage? Either if it's one site or if it's multiple sites? And still do a good job ensuring safety and still providing an actual learning environment? To Laurel's point, we push the ESC staff out. They're just eyes in spaces. That's it. They're not trained to, you know, do any real tasky work other than just be additional bodies to help supervise. And I don't want to speak for our principals, but I know that's about it, right? And you still have to manage where to put them, too. So learning, it really isn't much about learning at that point. It's about just keeping people safe in those spaces. So sorry, Director Brooks, I knew you had to hand that.
Wait, Director Simon's moving.
Oh, sorry.
So Laurel, thank you so much for that very vivid portrayal of what was happening. I think that transparency is really critical with our stakeholders. I know that a lot of people felt confused when we said we were going to go site by site, and then two days later, it changed. And I know we were getting that data. But I think seeing this data, speaking about it the way that you just have has built so much trust. And I hope the administrators and the sites have felt that parents are understanding. While there is some frustration, nobody wants to go back into the remote learning. There have been some uptight, very, the benefits, given the environment, as you alluded to and shared, was better than the, certainly well, much better than the alternative of having kids come. And I think the vast majority of feedback that I've heard from stakeholders has been that, you know, as much as we want in-person, we don't want our kids to be in an unsafe situation. And if we don't have the staff, they understand that. So I think the transparency in providing the information and helping people understand what's happening and why we're making the decisions that we're making just builds that confidence and trust in us with our families. So I really appreciate having the data here. And like I said, we've seen it, so we knew. But I think it's really important to paint that clear picture. And I do hope that you felt that support from the families. I think I've seen a lot of positive responses. So hopefully, you're feeling more positive than negative in that situation from our stakeholders. As, this might be a better question at the end. So like, if it is, just divert it to the end. But as we think now about these numbers and that they're coming down, I think you noted that it's important that the absences coming down is also reflective of people can teach from home. So we do have to be careful not to misinterpret some of these numbers, like looking like they're suddenly dropped. Because it's not that if we had been in-person, it would have only been 17 and 12 and 10. It's because people who are sick are teaching from home. So I just, I do, I recognize that, and I think that's an important point. And we have had a lot of feedback from the community about, can we do this? Can we do that? We've had a lot of feedback from substitute teachers concerned about some of the actions and having ideas for what we can do. So I think as we think about returning, and are there some new operational mitigation levers that we can pull? Kind of be interested to hear that on the backend and next week, at next week's meeting as well, just so that we... Are there, are there things that we're thinking of differently so that we can maximize in-person and mitigate some of these absences, I guess? But knowing that once we hit the tipping point, it's the tipping point. So maybe we can discuss that a little later.
I think maybe part of that story, too, is we're, half of the subs we had prior to the pandemic. Just our sub pool is much shorter than it was prior to, before the pandemic.
Yes. Everybody, statewide, the sub pool is much smaller. I think we've done a lot more things proactively to try to get and retain our subs. And just so our subs do know how much we appreciate you. And even with online learning, we still have teacher openings. There are still sub vacancies right now. So please don't, please look on absence management because there are still every day, teacher, teachers that need substitutes. It's going to be in an online environment, but we're still getting those subs for three days or more absences.
You know, my question, though, I mean, it's kind of the million-dollar question. But I mean, how are we at the peak? You know, I think that you listen in to medical experts, health experts, public health, and they're like, we haven't quite actually hit the peak. So I mean, I think that's what's going to be, as you already said earlier, that's going to be what's going to, later this week, and making sure people are reporting in. And that's across the board with, you know, our educators as well as our scholars. But I do also, I would just thank so much our principals throughout the district and staff. I mean, I, what I think has been really amazing is that though we are online, and it's not, you know, most people, we'd like to be together in person, you were still able to keep things going. Like, you know, I participated in mock interviews online. And that was really, it was awesome. You know, you didn't lose that connection or, you know, extracurriculars as long as, you know, there were people there to be able to operate them, were able to continue. And I think that that also adds, it just shows like how nimble and flexible and creative you all have been. And so I just really appreciate that. Were one of you, I feel like somebody was going to say something.
You asked me. Yeah, you asked me a question. The peak.
Great.
Good evening. We'll continue the presentation. So we are going to move, looking at statistics now. So we're going to start at the county level, and then we're going to go to the district level, and then we're going to go to building level, in that order. So we're going to start with a seven-county, seven-day Hennepin County case rate average. So you can see by the information provided to you that as of the 16th, we had 1,531 positive cases per 100,000 in Hennepin County. We do want to note as well that this information was pulled from the University of Minnesota's Division of Biostatistics. It's online. We've been looking at this all year as a reference point. You can go back to the start of school for historical. And we'd also like to note that all of the great rapid antigen testing you can do at home may not be included in this. This is only cases reported to the state. So if anybody's at home taking a test, doesn't report it, it's not in there. So just so we're all aware of what that is. So as you look backwards, it does give you November 29th through current. I believe on November 29th, we were hovering around 450 cases per 100,000. So we've seen quite a substantial growth in the last number of weeks. This chart that you guys were introduced to last month, this is a cases per 100,000. The blue line is Osceola schools with cases that were reported to the COVID team of positive cases of staff and students. So you'll note the big jump that we had here. That was, I know the number is 4,400 positive cases per 100,000 in just our population. So to be clear, our population is very small. It's 25,000-ish staff, subs, and students. And it's a very specific population. The population is very closely together. So when we look at this, you'll see the Hennepin County and Anoka County lines are also on there, which are substantially lower. That's accounting for the entire county, right? So we have a very small subset of our population is here. So just so we're clear, this is only students and staff. So we did see that big spike here, the 1-3 reporting week. We had cases of 368, which is 145 more than our previous positives case counts before Thanksgiving break. And then that top peak button that you see up there for the reporting week of 1-10, 867 positive cases reported that week. So this is the same data that we took from the University of Minnesota's Division of Biostatistics. So again, this is by school district zip code. So any positive cases registered in the zip code within the district's boundaries. So this is not school-aged children. This is not just staff. This is everybody in the zip code. So we tried to narrow it down a little bit from Hennepin County to here's the zip codes that we touch, and here are the numbers that we've broken down. So Osceola, Anoka, Robbinsdale, Wayzata, and Elk River are all represented here. We have traveled pretty close to the middle of the pack throughout the entire way through here. You'll see most districts in the metro actually follow the same trajectory. We do pull a few others that are a little bit further out from us, and they follow a lower, based on population size, but very similar trend line to what you're seeing up here. So this is the actual data of positive cases reported to the district since the start of the school year. So as referenced before, we do, we did see 368 positive cases with 105 staff positives, the week of 1-3, so that first week back, which was the week before into winter break, right? 1-3 is the actual report date, the last day. We report Tuesdays through Mondays. So the 1-10 report week, we saw 138 staff positives with a total of 867 positive cases reported to us. At that point, we were running four days behind notifications to families. And that was just on positives. It didn't account for the symptomatic cases we were working. And we were 11 days behind close contact notifications because we were so worried about having positive students and staff in our buildings, spreading it, that we were focusing on only positive and symptomatic cases. So families saw a really long delay in our close contacts. We have now since caught up on all of those communications. So as of about two hours ago, when I looked, we had 12 cases that were still needing to be worked, that were submitted today. So we're in a really good spot from a reporting and a responding standpoint. So this chart, which we introduced last month as well, this is a snapshot reflection of total positive and symptomatic cases by staff and student at the site level. So we have broken it down by percentages here. So before, we were thinking about a 2% model and then a 5% model. So we've gone all the way to 10%. I'll note as well that ABE and enrollment, with only one positive or symptomatic case, they jumped to like 30% of their population. So they're off the graph, but they're, by population size, it's not, it's not anything to worry about. But we do want to represent them because they're a building. So before we went to the online learning model, we had all but one building at 5%. And we had seven buildings above 8%. So in the last number of weeks, since one, we've moved to the five-day quarantine as opposed to the 10, which reduces this number, right? When we put them in a return date, as soon as the date tucks, the numbers fall away. So we assume they come back on day six. What we don't account for is if continued symptoms. We don't have the resources to go back and update that continually as we move forward. So we'd assume everybody comes back on day six. Unless they note to us in the first email response, they're returning on a different date. So this date is mostly correct. I just want to put that out there, that it's pretty close. So you'll see now that with the five-day return possibility, or day-six return possibilities, that these numbers are going to hover probably around 2% to 2.5%. Likely as we start to bring staff and students back into the building more rapidly. If we could see the continued spread, the numbers will hover around that number. So unless things get really drastic, we shouldn't see anything reach 5%. Again, unless something is happening. So with that being said, I am now going to turn it over to Mr. Mordock to cover the CDC updated guidance.
Thank you, Colin. I'll talk about the changes that the CDC made related to their isolation and quarantine guidance. The CDC data showed that COVID transmission occurs early in the course of infection. Based on this data, the CDC shortened their previous 10-day isolation and quarantine guidelines to five days for asymptomatic and mildly ill people. When the CDC made that change, there were some questions about, was this applicable to the school setting? On Thursday, January 6th, the Minnesota Department of Health did affirm that school districts could follow the CDC guidance for shortened quarantines, and that they would be following suit. The district on Friday, January 7th, implemented the new five-day isolation and quarantine guidance, which is applicable to positive cases, symptomatic cases, and close contact cases. So I'll talk a little bit more about what that actually looks like. To end isolation or quarantine after a full five days, so actually returning on day six, a person must be fever-free for 24 hours without using fever-reducing medications, and their symptoms must be improved. Doesn't mean they have to be gone, but their symptoms have to be better than they were. In addition, the person ending isolation or quarantine after a full five days must wear a well-fitted mask for 10 days. As has been the case this entire school year, vaccinated household members that are symptom-free do not need to quarantine. What is new is that unvaccinated household members can reduce their quarantine also to five days from the last date of contact with a COVID-positive person, and must wear a well-fitted mask through day 10. For anyone that cannot wear a mask, they will need to complete the full 10-day isolation or quarantine. What we've seen in the short time that we've been using this shortened quarantine and isolation is that we are seeing students return on day six more consistently. As we know that the younger you are and your vaccination status usually speeds up what COVID looks like for you. What we have not been seeing is staff returning much earlier. Most staff are not returning on day six. Most are staying out closer to their full 10-day quarantine just because of symptoms that are still persisting with them. Next, I'll talk about our vaccination totals by site. If you recall, the district hosted four vaccination clinics in November and December, and the last one wrapped up on December 8th. The graph before you is our staff and students that have received both vaccinations when we ran this report back on January 3rd. So 27% of all of our elementary students have been fully vaccinated or have their two doses. That's up from 10% back on December 10th. 51% of our middle school students have had two doses of the COVID-19 vaccination, which is a 4% increase since December 10th. At our high school level, it's remained the same since December 10th. It's 65% of our high school students have had their first and second dose of the COVID-19 vaccination. And then when we look at our, all of our students, we're at 37% of all of our students in our district, which have received the first and second dose, which is a 7% increase since December 10th. And as Troy mentioned, and we haven't seen any really movement on our... And as Troy mentioned, and we haven't seen any really movement on our staff vaccination rate. We've been consistent at 84% of staff having their vaccinations, both their first and second dose. As we've always done, we always provide some updates on some Hennepin County vaccination clinics that are occurring upcoming. There's one tomorrow at Eden Prairie High School and another one on Thursday at the Brookdale Library in Brooklyn Center. And then there's two more listed as well on there. I think it's important to note that Hennepin County has been offering $50 gift cards while they last for people that come in and get their first dose, second dose, or their booster shot. So take advantage of getting a financial incentive for those that are looking to get their shots. And lastly, there's other opportunities on the Hennepin County website for vaccination clinics that are available in and around our community, as well as the MDH Vaccine Connection website has a lot of different opportunities for vaccinations as well. Now I'll turn it over to-
Could I just ask you a quick question?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
With the quarantine change guidelines, so our district, we cover 10 paid COVID days?
That is correct.
Okay, so even with the change to five-day quarantine for asymptomatic, we still have the 10?
It still is the 10, because the way the language is, it still technically can be a 10-day quarantine. It really is up to whether it be the staff or student, but in this scenario, we're talking about staff. It's really up to them to decide how, do they feel well enough to come back to work? And so it is still, it still technically can be a 10-day quarantine for staff and students as well.
Director Brooks, have a question.
Yes, question before you walk away. On this slide of the Hennepin County Vaccination Clinics, just wondering what our plan is or if we have a plan to push this information out to all families in the district before Thursday, January 20th?
Because we have, this information is on, yeah, I've been working with Kay to have this information on our website so people can see where, and we have, I believe there's links to the Hennepin County Vaccination Clinics so they can see. And this updates, even when we were working on this slide, I think from the last time we updated it, there's even another, there's a fifth one I think that's even on there from today. So it's constantly updating as far as what vaccination clinics are available in and around our community.
You know, if there's a way that we can push this information out instead of expecting parents to visit the website on a daily basis in their busy lives, hopefully that can help boost up some of those numbers, particularly, you know, in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center. That would be my one ask. I don't know how often these opportunities are popping up in that area, but if we can push that information out to families, it could help us.
I believe we've been using social media as well to push that out. So I don't know if our buildings have been also promoting the opportunities with Kay, linking to, through Kay's communication.
And I think right now we've been doing such a mass push about come and pick up, and sign up for your COVID test, make sure you report your students. I think the balance too, too much, and then they stop paying attention to anything. I think that's another piece that's always hard for us in the buildings to find that perfect balance. What do we really need parents to have right now? And we've really been pushing hard to make sure they know how to sign up to pick up tests and reporting, you know, COVID positive. And I think this has been one of the big pushes for us right now.
I have a question, or comment, I guess. So I understand that this is the, I'm looking at the CDC Quarantine Change page or a slide, and I understand that this is coming from the CDC. But I do have concerns about us implementing strategies to mitigate that are separating people by their vaccination status. I think that's a really, really big concern and a dangerous road to walk down, especially when we consider, you know, we look at the vaccination totals that you've provided to us, and then also the percent of students and staff that are positive or symptomatic. And there doesn't, you know, there's obviously a clear lineage of how many people have been vaccinated by site, but there really isn't when we look at actual symptomatic cases. It's pretty much spread out evenly across our sites, and we're implementing quarantine guidance that is specific to a person's vaccination status. And I'm extremely concerned about that and need to voice that here at this time because we really need to be careful about how we handle this.
The alternative would be 10 days then. And we were really trying to, we really were hoping the five-day would help our staffing challenge for those who could come back to work, could be available to us. Now, I don't know if it's turned out that way. We didn't know. We were hopeful. Dave, maybe, I think you made a comment about that.
Yeah, the one place where we make a distinction between length of quarantine or no quarantine would be household exposures with, if you're vaccinated and you have a household exposure, you don't need to quarantine if you're symptom-free, but you do need to quarantine five days from the last point of contact if you're unvaccinated. So we do make that distinction along with the CDC recommendation. I think what we see in that scenario is we see the most spread in the household. So once COVID gets into a household, the likelihood of family members testing positive goes up quite a bit. And so I think that's where that distinction is, is where we're following the recommendations from CDC is what we see from an exposure level more than our schools is, once COVID gets into a household, the likelihood of family members testing positive is much greater.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. I think that's true with just about any viral illness. Once it enters a home, the likelihood of other people getting it obviously increases exponentially. However, that doesn't have any basis on whether or not they are vaccinated or not. It's how severe their illness is once they're vaccinated. So it doesn't mean that they won't get it. And so we're still treating them differently based on their vaccination status when in fact, a person who is vaccinated, who has less severe symptoms because of their vaccination status and is able to return to school or work or whatever the situation is, being vaccinated, having a close contact exposure, and being asymptomatic, they're still going to spread it. That's, you know, the spread still increases or stays the same or whatever. So treating people differently based on their vaccination status and their quarantine guidelines, I think, is a problem. I think that every person who's sick, regardless of their vaccination status, should stay home. I'm not saying that they shouldn't stay home if they're exhibiting symptoms. They absolutely should. But I do think that we need to cautiously handle this because what we're seeing, the evidence and more and more research is coming out saying that your vaccination, especially if you got it early on, may not protect you from getting this illness or spreading it. Yet we're allowing those people to continue to show up to work and to show up to school when they have a positive case in their home. Yet if you're not vaccinated, you're not allowed to do that. Yet your likelihood of spreading is virtually the same.
Yeah, and if you are vaccinated and you have a household exposure and you're exhibiting symptoms, you still need to quarantine as well.
Right, but you may be exposing other people without exhibiting symptoms because you have been vaccinated. So your severity may be very minor. You may not even realize that you have it again. Does that make sense? I feel like this is a really dangerous line to walk.
Well, we'll definitely take that into consideration. I feel like we're getting new information every day, right? And so these are the tough decisions and complicated issues that come with it, right? We've tried to stay pretty consistent as best we can with those recommendations. We didn't know if that five-day was even going to come as an option, which it did. And the MDH did support that eventually. I think the CDC came out a few days ahead of that by the time we finally got some state input on it for schools. So we've been trying to do our best to stay consistent with the guidance given to schools because that initial CDC guidance was actually a media release for the general population and not specific to schools. So we're really being cautious about it. So I think maybe that's what I would say is we are definitely trying to be careful with this and trying to take every mitigation effort we can because clearly our staff are homesick. And I'll come back to the comment I was going to make a little later. This has really been about operations. We're trying to do every mitigation piece we can, and the case rate data is becoming, it's important. But what has become very important is having enough people to operate our system. So whatever we can do to help keep people safe and get back to work as soon as we can, that's what we're hopefully trying to accomplish, including, I know, Troy, I think you were going to cover it, testing as well.
So Director Grady had a comment, and then we do, it's nine o'clock, so I don't want to keep people here very long. And then we'll move on with the presentation.
While it's true that both vaccinated and unvaccinated people can spread the COVID virus even without being symptomatic, what is important in the distinction between those who are vaccinated and those who are not is that those who are unvaccinated, the data is very clear that they experience, have a tendency of experiencing more severe illness and morbidity. And to bring it back to what Cory said and Laurel said as well, is we're not just trying to keep people from getting sick, we're trying to keep the operation going.
Thank you. We can move on for the presentation.
I think I got the subtle hint, like get the show on the road.
Get the show on the road.
All right, well, I'll try to make it as brief as possible then. Thank you, Chair. Real quick, a follow-up on the rapid antigen testing. That's been a very busy component that we're working on. We call it our layered approach. We have been distributing a first round of the BT Verder Home Kit. You'll see it on the left-hand side. And we do that to individuals that have smartphones. And my understanding is the smartphone isn't really needed, but it's part of the component. It helps people walk through it. And if families do not have smartphones, then we provide them with the Binax Now, which doesn't require that technology. Our first phase, we provided 7,615 that were distributed from the school sites while we were still in session. It was almost wrapped up when we went online. Some sites have had to work to get those to students after the online occurred. We deployed a second phase because we had more inventory left, and that started last Friday and today. And just in that short two-day period plus the weekend, we've seen another almost 5,000 test kits be ordered. So we're almost at about the 13,000 kit marker right now. And we have another 10,000 probably in stock, and we have another 25,000 coming. So we have a lot of opportunity to get them into the hands of individuals that want to do it. And then as Superintendent McIntyre said, I sent a link out earlier today. There was a pre-release to the federal website. That is available. I think we're kind of beta testing it today before it officially publicly released. If you go to the website, it looks like you're ordering stamps from the mail or the postal service. That's where it's all taking place, and so that is also online. We'll continue to do that. We also have the Binax Now Pro Kits, which is a larger bulk kit, and that's what we continue to test within the schools. And we've had some high interest in that. We have about, shoot, almost 4,500 families that have signed the consent form. That changes daily. We've performed 1,043 tests to date. Last time, somebody in the board asked how many of those tests have come back positive? We've had 143 positive cases. So just around 10% of the tests in the building with the staff or with the student have come back positive. So it tells families what's going on, and it's also allowed families to stay in school with minor symptoms. With major symptoms, we'll still send them home. Again, we're going to continue that mitigation strategy, that layer approach, and we continue to get volume and inventory in, and we'll continue to provide it. The next big update, this goes back to some of your conversations about the new five-day recommendation. They talk about well-fitted masks and other things. We've just got into inventory, the new KN95 mask. Very familiar with what Ms. Anderson's modeling over there. So she is doing a nice job with that. N95 would be what you see with Colin, and that's something that we provide to our nurses. We don't order those in for staff or students in general because there's a fitting process that OSHA requires us to do to make sure they're properly fitted annually. And I think the access to those, they're being reserved for emergency response, nursing, and stuff like that. These, we were able to get. It was a little difficult to source, but they're starting to come more online. And those will be available to our staff. We've ordered 10,000 of them, which if they're a daily replacement, could go pretty quick. We figure approximately 25% of our staff may take advantage of them and use them. I will offer this observation. I wore one for an hour today, and I'm back to my cloth. They're very tight-fitting. They do what they say they're going to do, but they're also, it's a matter of comfort and levels. So we'll have them available for staff at the sites to be able to use. We haven't been able to source and supply for students just because of the volume, but we continue to have a large volume of cloth and the paper mask that you see most of our kids wearing today. So that's a little bit about that. And then the last piece is we continue, as Director Brooks described, communicate, communicate, communicate. And I think we have to layer that approach too. And to your point, I've taken some notes on how can we get inside students, especially our elementary students, and connect to them about vaccine clinics and testing opportunities? There's some ways we can do that through the peach jar and the communications that the students usually get at home from the sites themselves, so we'll look at that. But this message is the common one. We keep reminding parents and staff, do your home health screen before you come in. It gets so repetitive that I think most people put it aside. We still have a lot of students and staff that show up thinking, you know, because the testing sites are so busy that, hey, I'll come to school and do it. And the idea is, is our testing at our sites should be for students and staff that show up symptomatic because you're just putting exposure for all the others that are working there. And so there's a different kind of level there of expectation. So we continue that. With that, I tried to expedite it. You've asked a lot of questions. I'll open it up for any broad questions that you guys might have about this process.
I just, one last question. How long do you anticipate it's going to take before we can get site-specific vaccine clinics at the schools with the lowest vaccination rates? I mean, I know it's not, it's something that you have to snapshot on availability, but-
Yeah, I think, so let me just share this. When we did the four first, and we jumped in right away and did it, it took a lot of time and resources to do it. We continue, and I've said this before, we continue to promote and offer our facilities and our buildings to Hennepin County and the state to provide that. I think they're still rolling through a lot of the clinics that they did school-wide, and they're going to more community-based. I've encouraged Hennepin County, they've done a lot of border stuff in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, and I've asked them to come in a little bit closer. I haven't seen them come back and say, we're ready to do more in the site. And I'll be honest, up till this current point, we didn't have the staff on our end to help support and resource it at this point because as you heard, we're multiple days behind on even reports and doing that process. We can look into it again and have those conversations. I think we're really waiting on the county because they've come out. And then when they ask us if we have additional time and resources, we've always volunteered that opportunity.
Thank you so much for all the work that you and your team are doing.
You're welcome.
So I have a couple of questions. So we said that our staff return rates are exceeding the six days. If we benchmark that to the general population, is that an anomaly to what? Because we have a highly vaccinated staff rate, so I just am seeking to understand, is that an anomaly? Or is that consistent with the general population with their number of days?
I would say, Director Simons, it's too early to say just because we switched the 10 days to five days, what, a week ago? And we're just, observationally, we're seeing staff that are a little bit more conservative on their return. We don't post interview when they call us and they say they're not coming back at day six because of symptoms, as far as I know. And I don't know, Laura, if you want to speak to that a little bit further. But it's so tight of a timeline in that turnaround.
I don't know the answer either, Director Simons. And I think about working with students and the high energy that you need. So you really need to feel pretty well in order to come back to work, particularly in working at sites with kids versus if you're sitting at a desk or even being able to work remotely in another position. So when I sent out, there were 41 staff eligible to come back on that Friday where we had 616 absences, and I sent an email to all of them. And I think only two came back, and they were ESC staff who had been asymptomatic the entire time. So they were feeling very well. Others, the responses that I saw were, I still have a fever. I'm still not, my symptoms have gotten better, but I'm not feeling well enough to return. But I don't know how that compares to the general public.
I just want to make sure I understand that. Can we ask questions about returning on Monday? Or should, is that appropriate now? Okay, so as we think about strategies to maximize in-person, have we, are we doing anything different to divert subs to elementary school level, for example? Because we've had a lot of feedback that it's really, oh, we know it's critical to have students in person, but we also know it's critical to have operational schools, and we don't want kids in class with no teachers. So, but- So, but is, are there any new changes in what we're doing to possibly maximize in-person for elementary schools? Should we return or should we see a spike in the numbers from a staff absence perspective?
We're evaluating a number of options right now that we will try to land on by Thursday.
Okay.
So I don't want to speculate too much.
Sure.
Because we really, you saw the numbers, like we're trying to get a good sense of strong, accurate numbers and really trying to establish what is our threshold for success, right?
Right.
We don't want to have a false, a false threshold there, right? And we feel like every day, every, throughout the day, all the data we're collecting helps inform us, so we're really trying to use every, the gift of time in the next couple of days to see how fast will this drop. The holiday yesterday, kind of, it's one last day of information for us to use. So there's district-wide, by level or by site. We're kind of looking at three different ways of approaching this. I'd really love to get a site by site.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's harder when you have so many sites being impacted at the same time.
Right.
So then we look at levels or just district-wide, what's our ability to site by site, but then those departments that serve every site and how are they being impacted as well?
Right.
So those are kind of the big framework questions we're digging into in the next couple of days.
Right. So as we, when we previously had the model based on community case rates and in-district case rates, we publish that data consistent with our decision model. As we possibly think about this operational element and making decisions based on staffing absences, if that's what's informing our decisions, is that information also going to be published?
I'm really concerned about sharing absence rates with the public because it's contextual. Case rates was pretty clear. You either had COVID or you didn't, and we got it from somewhere else. We're trying to make sure we contextualize. So for example, maybe there's a 10, I'll make up a scenario, 10% of the staff are out of a building. Who are those 10%? Is it classrooms? Is it food service? Is it the principal? Is it ESPs? Those have been very important for us to be able to figure out, how do we deploy supports? So I'm reluctant to put out a blanket percentage because then everyone's the most, the next best expert on our own data and, right? And without context, it leaves a lot open to interpretation. So we're trying to dig into ways we can analyze that. So at a site, what does it mean from those key operational areas, whether it's transportation or our nurse's office or, and we've really kind of started honing in more on the certified staff, so those teaching positions that are so critical. And we are digging into that more. So tonight was the first time we really felt like, okay, we got kind of an idea of what this impact is looking like versus putting that out there without a lot of context to help explain it. And I think that's, I don't want to be reckless with it, right? So different story than, and I think what you're seeing is a shift from case rate data to our own absence rates, like, because I think we're going to have cases.
Right.
What's our threshold to be able to implement our mitigation efforts? And I think with the thousands of rapid tests going out every day, that case rate data is becoming less important or less valuable. I don't know about important, it's important, but less useful, at least in decision-making. But what we can rely more on is who's at work and who's not, and how long will they be out? So those are the, kind of the variables we've been wrestling with as a team. And I think Laurel, someone said it earlier, maybe Sarah, but Laurel said it, well, we want to, we want to get back, and we want to get back and stay back. Or at least if we come back, is there a way we can go about it? If there's a unique situation or a high rates of illness at a school, you know, we can handle a couple of sites that hit 15 or 20%, but when it's 15 sites, we don't have the resources to deploy those kind of coverage points for keeping things operating when it hits multiple departments beyond the classroom. So we're kind of working through those layers. You know, what does it mean for classroom? What does it mean for key operational or basic services? And yes, we have looked at, do we shift second, do we put one level in online and shift resources to another level, like whether it's middle school or secondary or elementary? And we need a little more, a little more time, like 48 hours to figure that out.
Okay.
Because we're still, like, our data's informing us who's out, and it's changing so rapidly. Like, who are the people out? Because as more people are coming back, new people are getting sick. And we're trying to, what is that ratio? And, you know, we still have 300 people out ill today, or 250, I guess, closer to 250. That's still almost a normal January, and we're in remote learning, right? We're on online learning with nobody in our buildings, like, so to speak. So that's, we're still balancing, what does that absence data tell us we're capable of operationally?
Okay.
I know it was a long-winded answer, but I think that's...
No, that's...
That's the context around what we're trying to unpack. Because we want to be clear about, whatever we put out there, we want to be clear about what it means.
Right.
And we're still trying to decipher what it's telling us, as is most of the metro districts around us. We're constantly talking to one another right now about what is that threshold? And it's different for different-sized districts right now. That's what we're learning.
Okay, thank you.
Director Brooks? Do you have anything? Okay. Director, I'm just going down the line. You're like, wait, what?
Yes, I just have one final question, I guess, compound question. Are staff being directed to report students that they suspect to be COVID positive or to be symptomatic through distance learning? And are those numbers being added to the numbers that we've seen here tonight?
Yeah, so we got this question yesterday from two-site COVID coordinators. So if a student on a Google Meet has said, hey, I have symptoms, the sites with staff that have available resources to do that have been asked to call home and verify, they're not automatically being added just because. So if the sites have resources to do that, they are being asked to call. So right now, our nurses are on-site as they work on inputting stuff into synergy for the state reporting stuff. As admin or on-site is available to do that, they're calling to verify that. And we'll always go with whatever the adult in the household is telling us. So more often than not, it's no, they're not, and then we move on. So they are not always being added. But if we call to verify and the parent says yep, then we follow the normal process. Yes.
Okay, just to follow up that question, just for a little bit more clarification. It's my understanding that certain sites, maybe not district-wide, but I've sent out staff-wide emails requesting that teachers report that any child that they suspect may be COVID positive or have symptoms be reported. Can you touch on that at all? Anybody?
I can't. Nope, I've never, I've not heard that before, so.
We could check into it, but...
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look into it tomorrow, but I don't have any information on that.
Okay.
No. Kelly, Kelly might have more.
I know, Director Douglas, that, I know that secondary principals are reminding their staff that if they are testing positive, they should be able, be sure to report that information, even while we are out on distance learning. And they are also sending email reminders to their families that if their children are experiencing symptoms, that they definitely want to have them tested. If they do test positive, to be sure to report that.
Yeah, as a parent, I've received several modes of communication about making sure we do that. So I know that that's happening to get parents engaged and continue to report those things. But I also know that within the direction to staff to report their own illness, they've also been told to report student illness.
Okay.
And I think that's a kind of a concern.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. Is it secondary?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I can definitely follow up on that.
Yep, okay, thank you.
All right, try to, thank you, board members, for staying past your time that you usually commit. We appreciate that. Maybe just to wrap this up, and then I'll try to get us done for the night. I think what you're hearing and seeing is this kind of, here's what we know today, and we're continuing to evaluate and monitor our status frequently throughout the day and really coming to what we think is the best course moving forward. You know, again, right now, the plan is to be back Monday, and if we have data that suggests otherwise, we'll, we'll definitely take that into consideration. And I feel bad that Kelly left the room because I want to give Kelly Wilson and Becky Hesman and others credit for being very good partners in our conversations and decisions as we collect information. They've been very useful to us in that regard too. So I'll have to make sure I call them and follow up. We'll be, we'll be communicating by the end of the week. But really, we're just making sure we can do the best we can to ensure we got proper staffing levels back to operate our sites in the way we know we need to that ensure the safety and health of our scholars. The last agenda item, I think what I'll do again is I've, I sent you the last board calendar in my update to the board last Friday afternoon. It's the same document that's in your materials. So if you take a look at that and you have any specific questions, please reach out to me on anything moving forward.
I do, I think, I mean, we keep not having the opportunity to review this, but I know we can send that input to you. One really important question that I have is we had not, have, we had a list, we have a TBD Board Listening Session, and those have been repeatedly canceled this year. So is that, like, do we have any new information on, are, we're going to make February happen? Or is that still, how are we thinking about that?
I didn't quite hear on the listening session?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for asking, yeah. Our intention right now is to try to do that on February 15th. We'd really love to be able to do that in person, and we're going to try to come up with a way to structure that in a, in a way that can be really possible. So right now, that is a tentative yes, and I will have more information in the next couple of days. Kay Vila is helping me with that, but she's out with illness today, so.
Okay, and I think...
So right now, we had to move, remember, we had to move that work session, work session date to the 15th.
Yeah, and the online listening sessions, I thought, still worked, so if, I would rather be moved online than canceled.
Yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to ensure we structure in a way that everyone gets an equal opportunity to share.
Yeah.
And that it's not unequal in the time given. So we've looked at a couple of different ways we can do that based on some past experiences. So we're trying to like tighten up, like keep refining the model, right? A little bit?
Yeah.
And probably move towards even some topic-specific sessions too, I think would be really helpful.
That'd be great.
And then on another note too, be watching for my communications around, trying to get another board PD session. Communication's been one of those topics to try to get us together in the near future, and I might have more for you by, by the end of the week on that as well. So I know that's been on the list as well, so.
Yes.
So with that in mind, I think we're ready to...
All right, meeting is adjourned at 9:21 PM. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.